Okay, this is, we're gonna give this a shot. It is late. I apologize to everybody for our late start. We are having some technical difficulties this evening. But we're gonna give this a shot. So this is the City Council meeting for November 2nd for 2020. And for our call to order, it is 7:20 PM. Uh oh. Okay, so we're having another sound issue, so hold on. Oh, it's normally? Okay, again, it is 7:22. And it is the City Council's special meeting, November 2nd, 2020. It is called to order. Lita, would you please do a roll?
Mayor Karen Moran.
Present.
Karen, it is really hard to hear you. I'm so sorry to say, but it's very difficult to hear you.
Okay. Um, okay.
I don't know if I can just put my name to you.
Is that any better?
Yes, yes, it is, Mayor. It's much better.
Okay, let's, let's try that. That's, that's gonna work for you guys. You wanna go back and see if that messes him up? We're gonna keep trying, because I really don't wanna have to do this meeting later in the week. Okay, we're gonna keep going. Can you, wanna continue, roll?
Yeah. Mayor Karen Moran.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Kristi Malcho.
Present.
Councilmember Ken Gablin.
Present.
Councilmember Jason Ritchie.
Here.
Councilmember Chris Ross.
Present.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kent Trine.
Present.
Great. Meeting accessibility pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 20-25. The city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the virtual City Council meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public and public comment able to be submitted. To view live, city website is www.samamish.us/tv21. And the city YouTube and Comcast Channel 21 within Samamish only. To view later, meeting videos are available the day after the meeting on the city website, again, www.samamish.us/tv21. And on YouTube and on Comcast 21 within Samamish only. Pledge of Allegiance. Deputy Mayor, you wanna join us in the pledge, or lead us in the pledge?
I'd be happy to. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God.
Under God, indivisible, infinite, liberty, justice, law.
Thank you. Okay, firstly, up is, we've got the approval of the agenda. I'm looking for a motion.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Oh, okay, so who gave the approval in the second? Sorry?
Deputy Mayor Malcho was on.
Deputy Mayor.
Ritchie with the second.
Yep, okay, thank you. And is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the approval of the agenda, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Excellent. Okay, next up, we have Andrew Stevens, who's gonna speak to us about the emergency management. And Andrew, I don't know which room you went to, but I know you're around.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. Wanna make sure everyone can hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Good. All right, good to go. Good evening, my name is Andrew Stevens. I'm the emergency manager for E-Side Fire and Rescue. Thank you again for allowing me the opportunity to provide an update on the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. Less than two weeks ago, I reported that the majority of U.S. states were seeing an increased number of COVID cases. And I wish that I could report better news this evening. But the reality is that the U.S. is experiencing uncontrolled and record-breaking increases in both the number of daily new cases and the number of fatalities. The U.S. has registered over 9.2 million cases since this crisis began, more than, and more than 232,000 people have died. Last week, the county shattered the record for the most cases in a single day, or the country shattered the cases for the most, sorry, I'm getting a lot of feedback here. Last week, the country shattered the record for the most cases in a single day, nearly 100,000. We've seen a nationwide increase of 45% in new cases in the past two weeks alone. And the U.S. alone, that counts for more than a quarter of the global COVID-19 cases count, and roughly one-fifth of all fatalities. Of all the sobering COVID-19 statistics, one of the more troubling things I learned in the past day was that the city of El Paso just got assigned its fourth mobile morgue. So I want that to sink in. This is an American city that had to establish four separate morgue sites to assist in managing all of their COVID-19 deaths. Confirmed cases in Washington has gone up nearly 10% in the past two weeks. King County is seeing record numbers of increases in daily case counts, averaging well over 200 new cases a day, with 295 new cases since yesterday. Samamish is still seeing daily new cases, and unfortunately, another fatality bringing the total number of COVID-19 deaths in the city to eight. Halloween was a strong reminder to me that people are getting too comfortable in our COVID-19 mitigations. Sure, I saw some inventive methods to pass out candy through chutes or individually wrapped grab bags. Yes, those precautions certainly reduce some of the risk of inadverted exposure, but the risk was still there. So I must ask everyone, is there any amount of candy worth the risk of contracting a virus that is on average resulting in the death of an American every 1.5 minutes? The news of the past several weeks have been reporting on how out of hand this current surge is, but so many of us are still looking for ways to resume normal day-to-day life. Wearing a mask and socially distancing are essential to help slow the spread of this virus, but that's not all. You must continue to stay vigilant. Yes, you can do things like go to the grocery store, but you should not go several times a day. Limit those trips, omit all nonessential contact, and do not become complacent. We all need to remember that we are still responding to this disaster, and we are not in recovery. Example would be if a hurricane or tornado was directly overhead, that would not be the time to open your cellar door and begin trying to rebuild. The difference in this storm, the difference is this storm is lasting for months. The fortunate part is that we, through our collective actions, can determine the severity of this disaster moving forward. We can't pretend it's gone away, or we can pretend it's gone away, but we'll watch those numbers continue to slowly rise. Or we can band together, listen to the science, and demand a more strategic national approach to fighting the virus. To conclude this report, Samamish City Council requested ongoing updates on how the city is spending COVID-19 response and recovery money. Please note, there was an error in my previous report, and that a nonprofit grant of $14,000 awarded to St. Vincent de Paul was included, and the total accounted for emergency protective measures. So here's a summary of the corrected expenses to date. $216,000 to ensure continuity of government, primarily through IT-related tollwork expenses. Roughly $12,000 in personnel overtime. $105,000 in emergency protective measures, that includes personal protective equipment, sanitation hygiene, signage, external communications, temporary personnel, towing, and more. $420,000 in small business grants, which include the $98,000 in pass-through and care funding. And $115,000 in nonprofit human services grants. In all, the city has spent roughly $958,000 in COVID-19 response and recovery, including the pass-through care's funding. Currently, the city is accepting applications for a second round of small business and nonprofits support grants. Information on how to apply, as well as the criteria for eligibility, can be found at With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you, and stay safe.
Okay, I have got Deputy Mayor in the chat box.
Yeah, thank you. Adrian, thanks again for these weekly reports, very much appreciated. I do have a question as it pertains to the death rate we're seeing, and whether you can speak to it on a nationwide level or just specifically to King County. I know we're seeing a huge spike in COVID cases. Are we likewise seeing a spike in the death rate, or has that been consistent?
I can speak to that a little bit. We are seeing spikes in death rate. You are seeing obviously more cases. The death is not, the death rate is not as, hold on, because of the feedback, I'm gonna ask that anyone who is not talking mute their thing, because that's where I'm getting all the feedback. Okay, that's still getting a little bit. So if you're in the council chamber, possibly mute that too. Okay, so before we were seeing, I think, far greater likelihood of fatalities with this virus, it was more and more special needs, more vulnerable populations were getting it. We are seeing the greatest increase in cases among children 10 through 19 and 20 through 29, that age group, who may not result in fatalities, but it is resulting in possibly long-term medical consequences. Now, there's actually a lot of hospitals around the nation right now who are seeing massive surges. You are still seeing massive amounts of deaths. Like I said, we are averaging 800 to 800 fatalities a day in the U.S. right now. So while it's, we did experience more in the past, I think as a percentage-wise, the sheer number of cases, how it's skyrocketing, is gonna result in far more casualties in the long run. I apologize for the feedback. I think it's still coming, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I can't turn mine off, because that's how we're recording it.
Guys are doing the best you can, thank you.
So the next council member that I have is Councilmember Gablin.
Yeah, thank you, Andrew. Hey, just have a quick question. I read several articles today in, online about how the best solution now is for everyone to go out and get herd immunity, not to worry about passing this anymore. And actually, I saw it on several different news organizations also. I'm wondering if you could speak to that, and what your opinion is, and what maybe the CDC's opinion on that is, please? Yeah, absolutely, Councilmember. I could not, I guess in my opinion, and probably the opinion of most medical professionals, think of a more foolish way to try to combat that. We're seeing reinfections of COVID-19. You're seeing some temporary immunity within maybe six to nine months of antibodies. But even if that wasn't the case, and, you know, the best, I guess, the recommendation of trying to get herd immunity with this virus, you're talking hundreds of thousands of fatalities, millions of fatalities. And that is really, you know, I don't think anyone's really willing to risk that, you know? I think anyone who says, oh, everyone should just get it, I'd like for you to just, I guess, list all of the family members that you might be willing to possibly die from this virus, so you could resume a sense of normalcy in your life. Or, you know, to me, that is not an option. A more coordinated approach as far as mask mandates across the board, 100% contract testing, 100% testing, strict guidance. You've seen states in Europe having to lockdown, now having to re-lockdown. So you're seeing it may not be as effective to just do four weeks. We might need a longer effort, but we definitely need a national approach. Thank you, Andrew.
Okay, next I have Councilmember Stewart. I think you're on mute.
Sorry. Andrew, thank you for that response on the herd immunity. I would, yeah, anyway, appreciate that. Question for you on City Hall and staff. Have we had any exposures at City Hall, and have any of the staff been exposed? And if that happens, do we have sort of protocols in place for that?
Yeah, we have not had a single workplace exposure through the nine months of this incident. We did have a few employees who were reached out to by contact tracers for off-site or off-duty possible contacts. However, those employees all tested negative. Our HR department does have very close policies in place, so if someone does come in contact, what that means, what their expectations are. Obviously, you're not coming to work with symptoms, but there are symptom checks throughout the day. Upon entrance, they're logging people who come into City Hall. So if someone was here, started to become symptomatic, we'd be able to know exactly where they were, and if they had any close contact with other staff.
Thanks, Andrew.
Let me follow up with a council member. I was contacted today by HR. Actually, a week and a half ago, we had employee who had a weekend exposure from visiting family. And he was back at work on one-to-one contact with another employee for a short period of time. He was sent home after he was determined to have been exposed. He tested positive for COVID. The other employee had just been tested, tested negative. And then the employee has been at home. We were contacted today. He's been in the hospital now six days. Not for workplace exposure. We're calling him up, make sure he gets good care, and then working on his time off.
Great, thank you for that. And does our, I know we had one point passed the ability for people to have time off. Should there, should there be need, is that covered, or the employee was exposed at work? Will they be able to use that time off bank for that quarantine period while they were waiting for a test result?
Yes, we, we have some feedback, I heard you up a little bit, but you were asking if you would confirm that the council did allocate monies to help the employees get through first eighteen hours. So that's, this employee is coming up on that period of time. That takes us into federal guidelines. But not to get into too much detail, we have to try to figure out how to assist them with their FMOL leave. But the city's assistance has helped them for two weeks of leave. So we're trying to figure out where to go from there. Does that answer your question?
I don't know if it did. I'm sorry, Mr. City Manager. I was not able to understand a lot of what you said there. The feedback, at least for me, is, is really bad. I don't know if other people are experiencing that as well, but I'm having a really hard time understanding people.
Okay, let me just speak up and confirm, the council did approve some time off?
Okay, hey, let me interject. I noticed that Andrew Zager has two, two instances logged in. If he, that causes feedback. You have two instances logged in. So one needs to be dropped, that might fix it.
And maybe, it sounds like it maybe did. Can you hear me more clearly now?
That is much better, yes.
Okay, so then I'll repeat quickly. The council did vote on allocating monies in the event that employees contracted COVID or had to go through quarantine. And that was up to about 80 hours per employee to get them to, over the hump, to try to get the state monies to come in and/or the federal. So we're taking a very close look at that now, because the employee did not contact us until today. But they've burned through pretty much their 80 hours. So we'll take a look at that. At least we got them over the hump. And then the federal guidelines, to my recollection, we're still researching it, because it was late today, but I think they qualify for about 68% of their regular pay. So we'll work that to try and take care of the employee, get them over the hump.
I appreciate everything you guys are doing to keep the employees safe and making sure that they have the ability to use that leave, so they're not using their personal time off if they're exposed at work. I really appreciate that.
Okay, so do I have any other questions from council? Do I have any other questions from council? Okay, so the next thing we have up, if we are done then with our emergency manager, is the next person up is David Hoffman, who's here from Puget Sound Energy. And I see him here. So, okay, he's right on the line. So, David.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yay, I'm gonna turn off the speaker, so that everybody can hear you. So, welcome, and I will turn off the speaker.
All right. All right, thank you very much. I'm going to attempt to share my screen, and with the technology issues this, this evening, we may have to go a different route, but we'll see. So hopefully this works. So, can you see this screen right now? Excellent. Oh, man, what do you know? Okay, so I wanna make sure that I have the screen up that I need as well. So, okay. Thank you very much for this opportunity to present this evening. I wanted to come by and give a quick update on our storm response as, as a company, as your electric and gas utility. We, of course, always wanna make sure we communicate well. And one of the things that, that we're running into now is storm season, of course. Always usually starts around October. This year, started a little bit early with, with the storm in September. And so I wanted to come by and give a quick update on our response. So what I wanna cover this evening, and I will do my best to keep this short, I know you all have a very full agenda, so I will keep this as short as I possibly can. We'll start off with a quick safety moment, as we always do with any meeting, PSE. Cover a quick infrastructure and readiness topic, customer resources, how we restore power to your home or business. Touch on a couple of things that our customers should know, and how they can prepare. Also, go through our outage communications, how our customers can communicate with us, and how we will communicate with you all, as well as touch on COVID-19 impacts. And hopefully, we will have a couple minutes at the end for some questions. Whoops, getting a little ahead of myself here. So first for the safety moment. Again, we always have a safety moment at the beginning of any meeting where three or more folks are together, and PSE is, is participating or presenting. So, safety moment this eve, yes?
We lost your presentation from the screen?
Oh, my goodness, okay. See? I said we might have problems. Let's try this again. Can you see this now? Okay, that's not the way. Okay, you can see this now? Full screen?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So, I'll go back here to the safety moment, wrap this up. So if you come across a downed utility wire of any kind, in some cases, folks are tempted to think that it is a communications line, but we would ask that you always assume that it is an energized power line. Our, our equipment is very good at picking up faults in our system and turning off those lines, but it's always better to be safe. And assume that it is an energized power line. Stay as far away as you can, call 911 or PSE at the number listed right there. Do not drive over a downed power line, stay in your car, and if you must evacuate, this is a very specific way that we suggest folks evacuate their vehicle, and that is, open your door and jump clear of your vehicle. Do not touch your vehicle, and when you land, land with both feet together, and then shuffle away slowly to safety. And, and the reason for jumping away and not touching your vehicle and landing with your feet together is that helps reduce the possibility that you could effectively turn your body into a conductor for whatever electricity is in the ground. So we, we wanna maintain safety, of course. And then once you get 35 feet or more away from the downed power line, you'll be safe. But in most cases, if you can stay inside your car, you can stay away from a downed power line, you will be safe. So, so that's our safety moment. Real quickly, safety and preparedness resources. Ask folks to visit pse.com/storm, which is a new landing page that we set up this year for the storm season. There are all kinds of resources on that website, including links to videos. I would also encourage folks to visit PSE's YouTube channel, where we have a number of safety videos, as well as videos that cover a lot of the content that I'm gonna, I'm gonna share tonight. We have links to onsite instructor-led classes in both Tacoma and our Georgetown location, which is in South Seattle. And we also have our restoration plans linked on that site as well. And that gives a detailed description of system prioritization, emergency response protocols, et cetera, and it's all available to the public there. And then finally, on this page, I would suggest that all of our customers make a plan, build a kit, and be prepared. So that, that's all something that we've heard a number of times over the years here locally, that when storm season comes around, we are all supposed to have a storm survival kit at home. You can use a large tote to store all that. And then if you haven't gone through and refreshed those totes and, and those, those kits, now is a great time to do that. So then we'll move on to this one, readiness infrastructure. At PSE, we have nine, more than 900 employees with emergency response roles, which is actually almost one-third of the company's total employees. Storms and outages, as you can imagine, are an all-hands-on-deck situation for Puget Sound Energy. We have storm bases, seven storm bases that are all across our service territory. And at those storm bases, we have 24/7 on-call teams. If a storm continues or gets bigger, and our response needs to increase beyond the regional storm bases, we will activate our emergency coordination center. And that also has dedicated 24-hour, seven-day-week on-call teams. The ECC's communications tools really are aimed both internally and externally to assist in triaging repairs, so they provide oversight, overall oversight and direction for coordinated response effort. And I will, since we're short on time, I will skip through some of this. The ECC is the heart and mind behind how we respond to major storms that come through. So how do we restore your power, the power to your home or your business? So we have to prioritize our system at the highest level with transmission coming first and repairing any transmission outages. So those are the big lines, making sure that we have those up and operational. Then we will work on our substations, make sure that we have repaired, replaced any equipment that has been damaged in the substation. And then finally, we have crews working on the distribution system, which is what actually gets the power. gets the power to your homes and to your businesses. How do we prioritize the customers that we bring back on power and make that efficient? Essentially, we work with critical infrastructure first. So we're looking to get hospitals, water treatment plants, other essential services back online as quickly as we possibly can. Regional airports, water wastewater treatment plants, and other community critical infrastructures such as emergency response facilities, emergency operations centers, 911 centers, emergency shelters, and also facilities from which people can't be easily relocated. So think of nursing homes or assisted living facilities. And then, outside of that, we are also looking to get the largest number of customers back in power first. So when you see PSC storm response, or if your power is out, you may see three different types of trucks that will visit your community or a situation or a downed power line. And the first is PSC damage assessment. That can be both in the smaller, more passenger vehicle style, PSC branded vehicles, as well as our larger trucks. And we call those electric first responders. And so if the outage is caused by a simple or relatively small amount of damage to the system, or there's just a limb in the line, then our EFR, the electric first responders, are able to typically clear that damage and get folks restored. And then, if it's a larger issue, we will coordinate between our damage assessment, PSEFR, the electric first response, and then Patelco, which is our service partner. And those folks actually come in and do the work to get your power back on if it is a major, a major challenging issue. And then, two more things on this slide. And the first is, it's important that folks understand that PSC has an obligation to clear arterial right-of-way even before we begin restoring power. So that can take several different visits. So we may have crews coming out, leaving, coming back out with the proper equipment after they've done their assessment, and removing trees from roadways and other debris from roadways. And then, if a PSC truck does leave and you still have no power, hopefully that explains why, that essentially, what we need to do, what our crews need to do, is go back and coordinate with the right folks to get the right piece of equipment or the right tools in the field so that we can get your power back on. So those outages may take a little bit of extra time, but have no fear, we do not rest until every customer is back in power. A couple more things here. So there are really only two ways that we know that you don't have power. And that is, number one, if you call or you get on the app and let us know, that is the MyPSC app, and let us know that your power is out. Or if we have a larger outage, which would be from a substation. If we have a substation out of power, then we certainly know that you do not have power at your home. So we do encourage folks, if the power goes out, don't assume that your neighbor's going to call. Don't assume that PSC just automatically knows. Please do call us or report on the app. And if you use the app, you can actually sign up for automatic alerts if you decide to go to a friend's house, although in the age of COVID, maybe you're not choosing to do that. If you choose to go to a hotel instead and spend some time there to stay warm if it's a longer outage, then you can sign up for that automatic alert to let you know when your power is back on. So again, I strongly encourage folks to download the MyPSC app. It's very easy to access our storm map, or our outage map, excuse me, and find out where the largest outages are and what the estimated time of restoration is. And we really do want to hear from you. If your power isn't back on and the app is telling you that it is, or you've received a phone call that it is, please call us back. Also, if you haven't received a call or you're wondering what's going on and it's been a few hours, we are fine getting those calls as well. We love to hear from our customers and we really understand how frustrating and challenging it is to lose power, especially right now. I have kids of my own at home, and they're doing online school, and it is incredibly challenging when the power goes out, which has already happened this year at my home. So, at that. So again, I'll touch real quickly on our website. At our website, you can access a whole host of information, whether it's payment assistance, payment arrangements, look up outages, you know, anything that you would normally do on our website. But during storm season, the outage map, of course, is available there. You can access that from your smartphone or your laptop. And then, our outage map, this is what it looks like if you haven't already visited it. And you can get down to the very local area and find out what's happening with the outage in your community. So again, I mentioned what customers can do to prepare for storm season. Make a kit, be prepared, look up tips on our website, and charge those backup chargers for your phone and get some batteries. That will certainly help. So I'm just going to kind of slam through the rest of this. I've covered a lot of this already. And then, I'll close with COVID and what we have done. As I've already said, we are preparing for and have prepared for storm season. Our preparation really starts in July and August as we start getting our teams lined up and ready to, ready to go. We've had storms as early as August, so we want to make sure we are ready to go at any point. We are adapting our storm response and are ensuring that our crews are maintaining proper social distance and using PPE in their work. So there's been some concern in the company and outside the company about whether or not our social distancing rules and mandates at the state level may affect our response and may create delayed restorations. As of right now, we don't believe that that's going to be the case. Our crews are trained and ready to go, and we will still have the ability to ask our neighboring utilities, including our neighbors to the north in Canada, to send crews if we do have very large storms come through. That's one of the lifelines that we lean on for help, is crews from other utilities. As always, the safety of our customers and crews is our number-one priority. So we are ensuring, as I said, that our crews are safe and they're following COVID safety protocols. So with that, I will wrap up. So I'm sorry it took so long, but thank you very much again for your time. I would encourage you all to follow us on Twitter, on Facebook, and again, log on to YouTube and check out the videos that we have there as well. So I will stop sharing my screen. There's my contact information if you don't already have it, and we'll go from there. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Great, we have a couple of questions for you, Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. First, David, thanks so much for the presentation. I'm an avid user of the MyPSC app, especially when the power goes out, and it's really nice to kind of see where the, it gives you an outage map, which is kind of nice to see, and it tells you how many customers are affected, and if you're the only one. So anyway, thank for giving a plug in for that. It's really helpful to have that on your phone. The question I have is relative to COVID and, you know, the fact that, you know, some residents may be experiencing financial hardships due to COVID. And I noted that PSC is due to take a about 8.5% increase on natural gas November 1. What programs does PSC, and I know you have them, or at least I believe you do, for people that might be experiencing hardships during this time?
Absolutely. And I would definitely encourage folks to visit our website because, as I mentioned, we do have multiple programs. One of them, unfortunately, just because of state rules wrapped up at the end of September, but it was, we actually were able to support our customers to the tune of around $11 million over the spring and summer for exactly that purpose. So it was our crisis-affected customer assistance program, KCAP, and we worked directly with our customers to provide one-time bill assistance. And again, that helped our customers to the tune of nearly $11 million. We have other programs on our website, listed on our website. I'm happy to email that out, and if the city would like to link that on your website, I think that'd be super helpful. If there's an appropriate place for that to go, then that would be great. Otherwise, I'm happy to send that out directly to the council.
Yeah, I think if you send it to the city, and we can host that somewhere, push that out through our social media channels, just so that anyone who's in need of assistance can find it in a timely enough manner, especially with a rate increase on the horizon.
Absolutely. Happy to do that. Thank you.
Thanks.
Then I also had a question. I do like the PSC, MyPSC app for the fact that we have a generator, so I like to know when I can go turn it off. And so I was wondering if, do you have services for people? I know a lot of people with generators. So do you have services for people to have the generator hookups checked annually?
That is a great question. I do not know the answer to that question, but I will certainly ask the folks that do and give back to you.
That'd be great. And is there any other questions, council, for David? Great, thank you. And I know you have to, you have to give a presentation to Redmond.
That's right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, council, I think we're on a roll here. I'm going to move forward. And we're going to go for, the next up is public comment. Public comment pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 20-25. The city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the virtual city council meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public, and public comment is able to be submitted. Written public comments will be accepted until 5:00 PM on the day of the meeting. Submit your written comment by email to thecityclerk@samamish.us and thecitycouncil@citycouncil@samamish.us. Verbal comment, up to three minutes of verbal comment may be provided per person live during the meeting. Call the following number and input the access code when prompted by 6:30 PM the day of the meeting. The phone number 1-571-317-3122. The access code 929-348-197. Once you have joined, you will be placed on mute. The meeting operator will unmute you when it is your turn to comment. You will hear an automated voice say "unmuted." When that occurs, the operator will ask you to begin your comment. If you would like to provide public comment on the public hearing, please say so and you are unmuted. You will be placed back on mute, and you will have the opportunity to speak under the public hearing. Lita, do we have anybody for public comment this evening?
I see that we have two people who have called in tonight to provide public comment.
Wonderful.
And I will unmute the callers in the order that they have joined the meeting. When it is your turn, you will hear an automated voice say "unmuted," and then you will have three minutes to provide public comment. Please start your comment by stating your name and the city that you live in for the record. I will now unmute caller number one.
Hello, this is Nancy Way.
Hi, Nancy.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Yes. Great, this is Nancy Way. I have a PowerPoint presentation to accompany my comment. Can you see that?
Can you see it? No.
Nope.
Not at this time.
Perhaps it's best if I come at a different time then? Or do you want to try again to see if you can see the slides?
Okay, she's working on trying to pull it up. Oh, we've got it.
There it is.
All right, great. I will prompt you to go forward. There we go, okay. Can you see the full slide there? The Samamish isn't cut off? On my computer, it's cut off.
I can see it all.
Okay, great. So my name is Nancy Way. I live at 3451 East Lake Samamish, Shore Lane, Northeast in Samamish. I'm also a member of the Parks Board, but this is my comment as a citizen, not as a representative of the Parks Board. First of all, I want to congratulate you. Here we have the city of Samamish again, being named number one best small city in America, this time by Wallet Hub. And with great pleasure and delight that I noticed that pictures of Samamish Landing are the featured photo of the company this story. Next slide, please. Can you go to the next slide, please? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
We can hear you.
She's moving to the next slide?
I saw it move.
So there should be a slide talking about the waterfront.
Slide says a tremendous community asset.
Okay, so it's not showing on mine. Here we go. So the purpose that because of the Samamish Landing gave me a delight because the purpose of my comments this evening are to encourage you to acquire more Samamish waterfront. It's rare for a city to have a public trail and auto bicycle thoroughfare paralleling a lake with such lovely views of the lake and mountains. Let's really optimize this tremendous city asset for a variety of reasons, as you can see here. Number, slide number three, please. There are all kinds of examples of what can happen along shorelines. One of the most terrible examples, this should be on slide three, please. One of the most terrible examples that I know about is where I grew up in Rainier Beach area of Seattle. Along four miles of Rainier Avenue South, along Lake Washington, views are nearly completely walled off for bicyclists, walkers, and drivers along that thoroughfare and recreational opportunity. There's no access to the waterfront, and no view is really to speak of. Slide four, please. We say this can't happen in Samamish. We have zoning and setbacks to control intense residential development, and many of our lots are so narrow that new residential construction seems impossible, right? But this is not the case. Could you move to slide four, please? Can you guys see slide four?
Yep, it says "why now," right?
Okay. What is happening here? Yeah, so what is happening here? Views and access along our trail and the parkway are already being compromised with construction currently underway, and there will be more. Lot aggregation, setback adjustments, and variances are making more and more of our properties along the trail developable. We have the onset of the skinny house.
Oh, I think that's the last one.
You can see a picture of the skinny house there. These curated walls of buildings are negatively impacting the beauty of our trail and our parkway views. We are building our own great wall of Samamish. I'm not asking for changes to zoning or regulations. People certainly have a right to develop their waterfront property, but I believe the best solution is for the city to put itself more aggressively in the market and acquire critical shoreline areas. With the pandemic and severe budget restraints coming, this expensive task seems impossible, right? So we should be on slide five. But it's actually a great time as generalational ownerships are turning over, some families struggle to pay taxes, some may want to give a legacy to the city, some just want to move on. Also, we're seeing community beach owners tire of the management and worry about the liability of their community beaches. So if we could move on to the last and final slide, that would be great. So there should be what happens next. So we have what now, and then what happens next is the final slide. First of all, again, I want to say you should be very proud of Samamish Landing. Are you guys seeing the sixth slide?
Yes.
With the bicyclist grid. With the bicyclist's grade. And the work that the city has done to develop that waterfront, much of it in-house, you should be very proud of that. But I want to point out to you that you don't get the full credit here. The park property and its associated waterfront was actually acquired by the city of Redmond with its vision for how important this was, and that the property was later transferred to the city of Samamish. So what should Samamish do next?
Okay, we're going to have to ask.
Our citizens have already told us that waterfront parks are a priority. You have the surveys and the public process for the pro-plan. So you have community buy-in to acquire more waterfront property. But let's make some adjustments to our acquisition priorities that we set forth in the land acquisition plan. Parking is not necessarily needed for these waterfront acquisitions as the trail provides alternative access on foot or by bicycle.
Okay, we need to wrap up.
Yep. Let's link the plateau to the shoreline to promote residence use of our own residents on foot. And let's hire a special agent to help you keep abreast of shoreline properties coming to market. And let's really work seriously in partnership with King County Parks as we have a lot of interest here. Again, the senior Lake Washington, East Lake Samamish Parkway and Trail are tremendous community assets with the potential to be even better, and the opportunities to do this are fading fast. Thank you very much. I'm done.
I will now unmute caller number two. Hello, caller number two. Please state your name and your city that you live in for the record.
I have a PowerPoint with photographs to show.
Could you repeat that, please? We cannot hear you. Caller number two.
This is Mary Victor. Can you guys hear me?
Oh.
Yep. Sounds good, Mary.
Yes.
Yeah, is there a PowerPoint you guys will be able to display? It's got photographs of water coming into Zacoues Creek across and through Lewis Thompson Road.
Looks like she's pulling it up now. Let's give it just a sec.
Okay. Thank you. There seems to be a bigger delay tonight between what you hear and what you see. It's difficult as you heard. Thank you for doing your job. Thank you, honorable counsel and city staff tonight. I have lived in the city of Samamish for 20 years. So tonight, hopefully you'll be able to see the presentation. It's showing fast undetained flows that come upwind from infill development. Next slide. The area where I live in Tamrac starts at 212th Avenue Southeast and turns into Lewis Thompson Road. You should be able to see water flowing across the road with the second slide that comes all the way from 212th Avenue from Broadmoor. And that started getting piped directly to Zacoues Creek, I believe, in 2016. Next slide, please. And the next street down is 211th Place Southeast, which comes out of Tamrac. It goes to Lewis Thompson Road, and that large amount of water also comes undetained. Next slide, please. Looking at 211th Place Southeast, there are 25 homes that I can physically count that flow to the ditch either through soils or through direct piping to the ditch onto Lewis Thompson Road, which goes to Zacoues Creek. Next slide, please. The next, one more slide. The next slide should be for 210th Place Southeast. That's the next road down. There are 15 homes that flow out, again, either through direct piping or through water into the soils, which flow to Lewis Thompson Road. Next slide, please. So 212th, 211th, and 210th Place Southeast all go to Zacoues Creek, the headwaters, which is called the main stem, and you can see that flowing here. Next slide, please. The bird cages that were implemented by the city of Samamish were done in response to the 2015 landslide. Next slide, please. Those bird cages and catch basins do reduce the amount of sediment that flows to Zacoues Creek, but it doesn't do anything to detain the water. So at Lewis Thompson Road and 210th Place Southeast, there was a $1.28 million landslide repair that was needed due to a clogged river. Next slide, please. When you look at Zacoues Creek, the headwaters and main stem, you can see where the water's piped in the landslide that occurred. And I wish to note, it's slightly cut off in the corner here, but this area of the creek is completely dry here when it's not the wet season, including now. If you go look, there's not water running now. So it really increases the flow when there's rains coming later. Next slide, please. 210th Avenue Northeast is the next road coming down with houses there. Twenty homes that flow and actually overflow with no flow control, and they either go across the road here or into the ditch. Next slide. The sheet flow, which goes across Lewis Thompson Road, started in 2013. And the next slide, please. I just have two more slides here.
We're getting a bunch of feedback now. It sounds like somebody unmuted, and now we're getting feedback.
Yeah. Okay, we need to finish up.
My last two slides. Excessive runoff from development does overflow 210th, and it goes either along the ditch under Lewis Thompson Road or over the road. It's turban brown here and goes to Zacoues Creek. And one more slide. I'll give you the numbers. There should be a map of all the houses that I counted, typically that either directly flow either through soils or through piping. And they come from 211th Place, 210th Place Southeast, and 210th Avenue Southeast or Northeast, which is 60 homes total. And then there's 40 more that come directly in between those, if there's any odd subjects. Let's go one more slide. Zacoues Creek was realigned. The stream does get very high flows and storm surges, and it's really important to do the number one stormwater CIP project for Lewis Thompson Road for waters coming to it, particularly at 210th Avenue, all the way to Zacoues Creek. That is in the plan that you need to allocate to the CIP and do some funding so we can look for grant money. Thank you very much.
Excuse me, Mary. Will you be speaking for the public hearing also?
Mary?
Yes.
Will you be speaking at the public hearing as well?
No, just for the public comment today.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And there's a longer PowerPoint, which I emailed in, but I can't do the whole thing in three minutes, particularly with the technical difficulties today. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Yes, and thank you for those who called in, because I know the wait was very long this evening. Okay, so thank you to the callers. And for our consent calendar this evening, that's next up, and I am looking for a motion.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
So we had counsel member Richie as a first, deputy mayor as a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
opposed? Excellent. That would be seven zero. Next, we have a presentation. And it is on the King County Urban Growth Capacity Study, and I believe that is Mr. Pyle.
Yes, good evening, Mayor David Pyle. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. This evening, we have waiting in the background, King County staff, who will be providing an overview of the urban growth capacity study as it intersects with the update of the King County countywide planning policies and specifically the update of the countywide planning policies growth targets. We have Karen Wolf, Rebecca Maskin, and Lauren Smith here tonight to present to you some information on that process. So I'll pass it off to Lauren, Karen, and Rebecca. Maybe muted, Lauren. I don't, I'm not hearing you.
Got the camera going. Can't get the mute going. Thank you. Thank you, David. Thank you, Mayor and council members. My name is Lauren Smith. I'm the Director of Regional Planning for King County. Thanks for inviting us to talk with you tonight about the countywide planning policies and growth targets and the urban growth capacity report. I just want to offer a couple thoughts before Karen and Rebecca make their presentation. And the first is that our role as King County staff is to facilitate the current update of the CPPs, as we call them, including the growth targets. We work with planners across the county through an inter-jurisdictional staff team in supporting our elected officials at the Growth Management Planning Council, including the county council and city councils. And the staff team operates on a consensus basis in presenting information to our elected officials so that they can make the policy decisions. And the second thing I wanted to mention is that the process that we are using to develop the growth targets has been used successfully for almost 30 years in King County. I think this is the fourth time we've gone through this process. Obviously, over those 30 years, the growth issues in our county have changed a lot. So we need to be open and have an ongoing dialogue and maintain good communication with everyone throughout the process. And that's one reason why we're really happy to be here tonight. So thank you again. We realize that while all jurisdictions face some similar issues in managing growth, every city is a little different. So we'd like to stay in touch with your staff, and we're available to meet with them or to come and talk with the council anytime to support the city in its process. However we can be helpful to you, please let us know. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to my team.
Hi, this is Karen Wolf, and I work in the regional planning section at King County. And my job is to staff the Growth Management Planning Council, and I am the project manager for the countywide planning policies. So I know you're really interested in the growth targets, but I want to take a few minutes and go over sort of the planning context in which we will be going over, be determining the growth targets. So first, I'll do a real quick overview of the Growth Management Act. So as you can see on the screen with this, that the Growth Management Act is adopted by the state legislature, was first adopted in 1990 and has been amended several times since then. The Growth Management Act informs the multi-county planning policies, which in turn inform the countywide planning policies, which is what we're going to talk about tonight. But the Growth Management Act also provides direct guidance to the countywide planning policies and the comprehensive plans. So the comprehensive plans are adopted by each of the cities, 39 cities in the county plus King County. In turn, the cities of Samamish would adopt a zoning code that implements the comprehensive plan and then further development regulations, just so you can get a sense of the context of how each of these elements needs to be consistent with each other. So moving on specifically to the Growth Management Planning Council, and council member Pam Stewart sits on the Growth Management Planning Council. I believe over the years, we've always had at least one representative from the city of Samamish, and we're always happy to have your perspective and expertise on the Growth Management Planning Council. So this body was established in 92 by interlocal agreement, and it's always been convened by the county executive. But included are representatives of, it's all elected officials representing King County, the city of Seattle, and the Sound Cities Association. And of that city of Samamish, as I've mentioned, I believe has always had a seat. We have two, three slots for exec official members. Right now, we have Ryan Stokes from the St. Pauli Valley School District, representing schools. We have a representative from the Water and Sewer Districts. And then we have an open slot for someone from the Port of Seattle. So these members are welcome to sit at the table, participate in the discussions, but do not have a vote. So the role of the GNPC is to oversee the countywide planning policies, including the establishment of the urban growth area and policies of a countywide nature. They make a recommendation to the county council. They are not a legislative body in and of themselves, even though they all, members represent legislative bodies. Once the county council approves the countywide planning policies or an amendment to the policies, they are then sent out to all 39 cities for ratification. And ratification occurs within 90 days if 30% of the jurisdictions, representing at least 70% of the population, approve the amendment, and then they become effective. Next slide, please. Thank you. So what are the countywide planning policies? So the countywide planning policies establish the guidance for the comprehensive plans, as I've mentioned. They also establish the urban growth boundary and the criteria for revising that boundary. The countywide planning policies also include growth targets for each jurisdiction, and Rebecca will get into that in much greater detail here in just a few minutes. And the criteria for defining urban centers and manufacturing industrial centers consistent with the multi-county planning policies of Vision 2050. And then the CPPs also deal with a variety of issues of a countywide nature, especially environmental issues and affordable housing. So next slide, please. So why are we updating the countywide planning policies now? Well, first and foremost, we want the countywide planning policies to be consistent with our multi-county planning policies. That's Vision 2050. We will be establishing new growth targets that will set the foundation for the land use assumptions and your comprehensive plans when they're adopted in 2024. We'll be providing policy guidance for those comprehensive plans as well, and dealing with other policy and legislative changes that have happened since the last time the CPPs were updated. And then also to deal with policy recommendations from the Affordable Housing Committee. And then real quickly, we'll just go over the guiding principles that establish the countywide planning policies or that, I'm sorry, that are guiding this update. And so this created a statement of countywide agreement, basically defining the scope and the context for the update and a way to enable stakeholder engagement. And so in June, the Growth Management Planning Council approved these countywide planning policy guiding principles. You can read it on the screen, but again, limiting the scope. It's going to be a review based on the 2012 comprehensive plans. But within this, we're really working to center social equity and health. We're going to deal with, as I mentioned, policy and legislative changes, and very importantly, provide clear direction to the comprehensive plans while we implement the regional growth strategy that's included in the multi-county planning policies, again, to provide those growth targets that will form the basis for city comprehensive plans. So there are six main chapters in the countywide planning policies. And without going into any detail, because I know we're, you know, on compressed time here, we have an environment chapter where we're going to be talking about climate change and access to healthy environment, development patterns, housing, really focusing on affordability. housing, really focusing on affordable housing. And then the last three chapters, the economy, again, talking about diversity of jobs. Transportation chapter talks about equitable transportation system for all users. And then finally, our public facilities and services chapter, which talks about establishing resilience and recovery policies and focusing on water and sewer issues. Then with that, what the countywide planning policies will also include is our growth targets for 2044. And for this, I'm going to turn it over to Rebecca, who's King County's demographer, who is leading the effort within the countywide planning policies to update the growth targets.
This is Karen. Hi, everyone. My name is Rebecca Maskin. I work in regional planning with Karen and Lauren for King County, and my job title is demographic planner. Tonight, I just want to talk, go on a couple of topics about growth targets mainly. I'll take you through the process of how we do the technical side of developing the growth targets, but I want to emphasize that this really is a facilitative process that we bring all of the 39 cities and the unincorporated urban area of King County together to create growth targets that we are looking to plan for in our 2024 periodic comprehensive plan update. And that's really the genesis for all of the work that Karen and I are doing right now to update the countywide planning policies and the growth targets. And antecedent to that is the Urban Growth Capacity Study, or maybe better known as Buildable Lands, to give a sense of really where we're, how we're doing right now with our existing comprehensive plans, taking a look at that capacity. And that informs this process, although it is not the only input to this process. So I will go into a little bit more detail about that. So first, to just level set here, I want to talk about what growth targets really are. So as Karen mentioned, growth targets are a part of the countywide planning policies, and as such, they're a policy statement about the number of housing units and jobs that each community is planning for in their next periodic update of the comprehensive plan. We only create growth targets for the urban area, so just for the 39 cities and the urban unincorporated area of King County. The growth targets are for a 20-year period, so they'll be for approximately 2020 to 2024, excuse me, 2044. And they are created collaboratively with the cities in King County. So King County does not set growth targets for any jurisdiction. This is, we serve as the facilitator of this process, bringing data to bear, creating a process to kind of technically divide up our regional and countywide population projections and job forecasts. And then we gather all of our cities together to collaboratively determine our growth targets, and I'll go into more detail about that next. So this slide presents the key milestones of the growth target setting process. So the first five steps I'm going to go over in detail, but the key takeaway from this kind of visual slide is that we start at a regional level, we work down to a county, then to a geography called the regional geographies that comes from Vision 2050, and then we move to the city level. So we'll start out at a big geography with the region and move down to individual cities like Semamish. And I'll go through those steps one by one. So our first step is taking a look at a regional forecast, and we're getting this forecast from the Puget Sound Regional Council. It's the forecast that's underlying Vision 2050, telling us the amount of people and jobs that are coming to our region over the next 30 or so years. So we get this forecast from PSRC. We make sure it's lining up with the Office of Financial Management Population Projections. We coordinate with the other three counties within PSRC to kind of make sure that we are all starting from the same starting point, and we're going to use the same kind of inputs to do our own separate growth targets processes. So that coordination has happened. We are using this forecast for the growth target setting process, and we will step into the next step. So what this slide is showing you is the amount of people and jobs that are anticipated to come to the four counties of the central Puget Sound region by 2044. Once we have that regional forecast, the next step is to apportion it down to the county level. And this step and the next step are heavily dependent on the regional growth strategy that is in Vision 2050. So the regional growth strategy in a nutshell is a numeric way to plan for and allocate growth to the four counties first, and then within each county, to these other geographies called regional geographies, which are collected, are collections of cities that have similar characteristics. So the first step of that is apportioning growth to the county. So as you can see here, the growth strategy has stated goals of assigning 50% of the growth population to King County and about 59% of the job growth to King County. Once that's, once that step is set, we take it a step further by applying shares to allocate that countywide growth to these individual regional geographies. And I have a slide next that has those percentages on it and what the names of those geographies are. Semamish is in the cities and towns regional geography. This is probably the widest reaching in terms of the types of cities that are included as a part of the regional geographies. So Skikomish, Skikomish is our smallest city in those cities and towns regional geography, and Semamish is the largest. But these are all cities that are not connected to the largest cities in King County via high-capacity transit. They are, also includes places like Skikomish, for example, that are detached from our contiguous urban growth area. So it includes everything from small towns into medium-sized cities like yourselves. So we take these shares that are in Vision 2015, the growth strategy, and apply them to the county share. We do a second step here of converting population to housing units at this step, too. And we do that with some local assumptions. I'll get into that in a second after I advance the slide. So as you can see on this chart, this is the share of population or the share of the countywide population and job growth that gets a portion to the various regional geographies. Once that's done for the population, we convert it to housing units because we need to create housing units in terms of, or we need to create targets in terms of housing units and jobs. To do that, we use some local assumptions. We take local assumptions like household size and vacancy rates for each jurisdiction and kind of roll them up to the regional geography level. The, I know the, we want to make sure that there is some local representation in some of those assumptions, and we lose some of that in this simple conversion, but know that we can kind of preserve those local details later on when we're actually setting growth targets for each jurisdiction. So each jurisdiction can bring that kind of local information to bear. But once this process is done, we've got housing units and jobs for each of these regional geographies. The next step is to apportion that to individual jurisdictions, simply as a starting place for our conversation and our countywide facilitation for developing growth targets. So this slide is the different share of growth, both going to King County and also the various regional geographies within King County. So you can see for the cities and towns, regional geography, the total amount of growth that we are anticipating from about 2019 to 2044 is about 14,000 housing units and about 13,000 jobs. So that 14,000 and 13,000 numbers, those numbers will be a portion to individual cities by a variety of data factors that I'll go into next. So as I was saying, we take those numbers and talk, we use a variety of database factors that are related to growth and capacity and different size of jurisdictions to take different stabs at creating a preliminary set of target ranges for each jurisdiction. Now, these are not in any way binding to the jurisdictions that are participating in this process. We just take the data and apportion this out as a place to begin the conversation when we convene our cities. And this is kind of the stage that we're at right now. We've done the initial apportionment for the preliminary targets to individual jurisdictions, and Semamish staff has been very involved in reviewing them as well as a part of our technical committees and a part of the regional geography groups. So once we have those ranges, we send them out, and then we gather all our cities together by regional geography to deliberate and negotiate what our final growth targets are. We'll look at all of the different factors within that range that we use to create these preliminary ranges and weigh them out to see if they have meaning or have importance to give the jurisdictions amongst that regional geography table to see if they want to use that as a starting place to allocate growth targets, or if some of them might make less sense, like land area might not make the most sense for every regional, for every city within a regional geography. But that's the kind of information that we put in there to just, to break out the geography number into individual cities to get the process rolling. So this is really the stage that we're at now. We had our first kickoff meeting with all of our jurisdictions, just explaining the growth targets process, for the reason that Karen and myself are here today, to tell you a little bit more about it as you start thinking about the periodic update and the kinds of inputs and influences of growth to Semamish that you might want to bring forward in your comprehensive plan and set those expectations for the level of housing and jobs that you're planning for. So just to follow up with the next steps, we will continue having these meetings throughout 2020, possibly into 2021 as well. We'll have a brief progress report on where we're at at our 2020, our December 2020 GMPC meeting. And I'll hand it back to Karen to talk a little bit more about our future schedule for this work.
Great, thanks, Rebecca. Again, what we can't emphasize enough is that we're actually here at the beginning of the process, and that not only is the Growth Management Planning Council involved each step of the way, but also we have two different staff teams, the interjurisdictional staff team, which includes staff from representatives of all the cities, including Seattle. And then that group is facilitated by me. And then the technical committee that Rebecca is facilitating that she talked about with the growth targets. So again, just to kind of give you some context, the Growth Management Planning Council met in June when they approved the guiding principles. In September, we had a work session where we went over in a bit more detail what the process we're talking with you about today. In December, we're going to be presenting draft policies, the chapters that I mentioned earlier, and some growth target numbers. And then this will bring us into 2021. And next year, we're proposing three meetings in the first half of the year. The first, February, March, where we'll work with the Growth Management Planning Council to develop the public review draft and the draft growth targets, which includes a draft, draft growth targets, that will then go out in the terms of a public review draft, which the Growth Management Planning Council will come back sometime in the April-May framework to identify amendments, agree on the final targets, and then with the goal of final adoption in the end of June. And the reason we're targeting June is because in accordance with Vision 2050, we're required to have the countywide planning policies updated and adopted by the end of 2021. And so once we get to approval by the GMPC in June, that then gives six months for county council approval on that ratification process I talked about earlier, to ensure that we're done by the end of 2021. And then the updated countywide planning policies, which include the growth targets, will then be in place to provide that ever-important guidance to each of the cities for the update of the comprehensive plans due in June 2024. And with that, we're done and happy to answer any questions, Mayor, as you see fit.
Great, okay, we do have a few questions. So the first one that I see is from our deputy mayor.
Yes, thank you all for being here this evening. I do have a couple of questions. Rebecca, I thought I heard you say that you guys have already given out preliminary rate to the city of Semamish. What is that?
So this is where we keep those kind of regional geography level numbers, and we come out by a bunch of data. So for each jurisdiction that we have easily accessible data for that anybody can get. So, for example, the number of housing units in every jurisdiction. We create, we take the actual raw estimates of housing units. We turn that into a percentage, so each jurisdiction within a regional geography has a share of that, and then proportionally, we apply that share to the regional geography number to create a number for each jurisdiction. And then we repeat that for all the other data factors. So some of those factors include some of the initial capacity numbers that are coming out of the Urban Growth Capacity Report, the relative number of jobs in each jurisdiction, the land area, the past targets, so the targets that we currently have. We use those to kind of see if that's a good starting place for it. So that creates a range of numbers for each jurisdiction. And the ultimate target that jurisdiction determines is a good fit for itself doesn't necessarily have to fit within that target. What we're hoping is that tightly to that regional geography kind of control total number, because that's really coming from Vision 2050, and we want to be good regional partners and strive to reach that goal. But local information is what you know best and your staff knows best, and we want to bring that information to bear so that we aren't just applying some kind of cookie cutter from raw data to apportion growth targets to each jurisdiction.
Sure, understood. I'm just curious if you have that range that was provided to the city or if we need to obtain that later from staff, but I think council would be keenly interested in what that range looks like.
Deputy Mayor Malchus, so I did pile up, I could interject here for a second. There is a memo under item number 10 for tonight that comes later in the agenda tonight. It was added to the packet that does include the ranges that were given out by King County, and it explains the methodologies supporting those ranges.
Can you, do you have that? I'm having, I'm having all kinds of problems with my packet, so I'm having to go out on the internet and look at stuff, which makes it a little harder.
Sure, I'm actually looking at it right now.
And while he's pulling that up, I heard Karen mention that the draft target numbers will come in December. And I think, you know, our council is in need of developing kind of our position, if you will, and in order to facilitate those meetings, right? And I think the other question I have is, at what place will elected officials have a place in those meetings as well? I mean, are there other elected officials from other jurisdictions already participating? They haven't participated yet. You know, I think there's a heightened interest here in this topic and probably in every jurisdiction. But I can assure you that our council would love to be in those December, in that December meeting. So I'm kind of curious if other elected officials are already at the table, not yet, and if December is an appropriate time.
Well, elected officials are coming into play as a part of the GMPC. So Councilmember Stewart has a seat on the GMPC of Semamish, has a little better representation than many of our jurisdictions, at least directly. So GMPC is the ultimate owner of the countywide planning policies and growth targets. So they approve and move those on to the next level. So at a December meeting, we're hoping to give a briefing. We certainly don't plan on having draft targets for every single jurisdiction, but at least an indication of kind of directionality, at least at that regional geography level, if not some kind of whole number. We'll see how we progress with each regional geography. Some cities or some geographies, like metro cities, only have two cities in them, so it's quite easy to do, but the cities and towns has 19 jurisdictions, so we're envisioning that's going to take a little bit more of an effort for that. We, this, the actual engagement of jurisdictions to do the setting of these draft targets before they're ever kind of get to the public review draft, for example, of the countywide planning policies. This is really a staff-based process, and staff are the, for every jurisdiction, are the link for elected officials to the process. So the way we've envisioned it, and we've done it for the past several cycles, is that staff are kind of collaboratively determining, both reflecting their local information. both reflecting their local information and the perspectives of their council in the process. And then also responsible for bringing that information back to the council and then providing more updates more regularly. And Karen and I are able to.
Okay, so, you know, for what it's worth, while we have a member on GMPC, Pam doesn't represent us, she represents a CA. So we don't really have a direct plug-in there, aside from the fact that one of our fellow council members is on GMPC. But I would suggest to our council this evening at the conclusion of this that we have a discussion and give our staff some direction. If we don't have a a representative, then staff has got to hear from council at a council meeting where our collective minds are on this so that they can go forward and know exactly what this council sentiment is on these growth targets.
So Deputy Mayor David Pyle again. So we did add item 10 on the agenda for exactly that purpose. There's some supporting information for your discussion. King County has been assisting the caucus discussion by first setting up a survey for all the jurisdictions to fill out. We've included a copy of that survey with that agenda item. And that is, let me, one of the points of conversation later in the meeting. So we're tracking your exact thoughts there. I'll share my screen and bring up the Agenda Bill, which is included for later tonight, so item number 10, I believe. I'm not sure it's sharing, but I I'm assuming you're seeing it. And what this is, is it shows the the high relative, the average relative, and the low relative. So the high relative is 45, 47 units. And this is just based on statistics and how it breaks down. The the average relative is 37, 73, and the low relative is 17, 43. And there's a description around each of these and what where it comes from. There's also some other information we've included in this Agenda Bill. So this is a, we we hope, a fairly informative Agenda Bill for you for tonight and going forward as a foundation. So you're happy to answer any questions on that later. We wanted to allow King County the opportunity to present to you, allow for some some thought within the council on this, and then come back to it later tonight as another, at another point in the agenda.
Thank you, Stephen.
Okay, next up, I have got council member Gamlin.
Yeah, thank you, Karen and Lauren and Rebecca for the information. I I just have to say astounded at the level and the amount of planning, assignment of initial numbers without any policy decision or basically any discussion as a council as a whole at all on this. We are dealing with enormous infrastructure issues up here on the plateau. We have no direct access to highways, freeways. We have no access to light rail, and by the way, we never will. Most of our egress roads are single-lane arterials that are very difficult, if not impossible, to bring up to greater capacity. By the way, they're already overcapacity. Traffic is terrible. We have major stormwater runoff issues due to overdevelopment. We had a public comment on that earlier today. I don't know if you saw the floodwaters coming off. Huge issues up here with that. Our schools are already overcrowded. We already have schools that are beyond their capacity. They're beyond their capacity with having portables there, and they're already beyond the capacity. Our emergency egress is a mess. If we have to get on and off the plateau in an emergency, we have little tiny single egress roads. We have, if you look at the Paradise disaster, they're a much better situation than we are in California. We have no additional transit improvements scheduled for Samamish. Even if we did, we still have to get through our single-lane traffic. The last time we went through this, we took growth at a high rate. I don't see any solutions to our problems up here. Our traffic or stormwater or schools or emergency egress, none of those issues. And it doesn't sound like when these initial numbers are put together, any of that was taken into account. As I said, our last time was 4,000, we've taken 4,000 units between 6 and 19 up here, and it's wreaked havoc on our city. And now we're signing at the low end, I'd forget what it is, 1,800 units at the high end, another 4,500 units. We're unique in King County in the plateau, we're having major problems. And we find out now that we're having these numbers assigned before our council has even come up with a policy decision on this. It seems really backwards, cart before the horse to me. So understand that's probably nothing that you, Lauren, or Karen, or Rebecca are involved with. So I'm not pointing this at you directly. But holy cow. It it's, again, it just seems extremely backwards. I know we're at the beginning of the process. It would seem to me Samamish should be in a position to take little to no additional growth coming up. And the whole process in this is is very strange that we don't have a policy decision well thought out and voted on by our council. Instead, it's some hybrid between a single representative of the city and city staff, and then staff telling us eventually where we're at approximately on these. But again, we haven't voted on a policy decision on what we want to put forward. And maybe that's on us, and I'll take that on. But holy cow, it's it's very interesting. And I don't feel at this point that Samamish with our needs and our problems has been heard from in the way we should be. So I'll leave it at that, but we'll we'll obviously have to work on this. Thank you.
Okay, the last, the last one I have listed here is council member Trinh.
Thank you very much, Councilman Mayor. My question's for Laura Smith. So Laura, I believe, has King County, are you aware if King County has approved the Vision 2050?
Yes, Vision 2050 was just adopted at the General Assembly of the Pusser County Regional Council on Thursday, last Thursday.
Right, on Thursday, yeah. So I'm I'm just wondering, does that go to King County then to be adopted and approved? And if so, has it?
So that was the final, that was the final adoption of the plan with all with all the jurisdictions participating at the General Assembly.
All right, thanks. And then the follow-up, so the intent of the GM, do you, do you understand the intent of the GMA? Initially, when it was written, was for cities to have the ability to be the kind of city that they wanted to be, that they had the ability to manage their growth to become a city as they, as the residents and elected officials decided that city wanted to be. Do you, do you understand that as that was the initial intent of the GMA?
Well, I think the way, the way we like to talk about GMA or think about GMA is that it provided this this framework that was, you know, at the top. And but then we also have bottom-up planning in the county and in the cities. And the idea is that these things, you know, kind of meet in the middle. And you have an overarching framework at the state level that provides the structure and the comprehensive plans. But then you really have to have a process at the local level. So I really think it's both. And I I know that, I know that, I appreciate the description of the growth challenges that you all are experiencing. And those are exactly the kinds of considerations, I think, that are that are good for the caucus discussions. And obviously, you'll you'll have more discussions as a council this evening and in the future. And so absolutely, I think, I think we try and balance those things.
Yeah, I mean, even I think when it is initially written up, it was they, the initial authors of the Growth Management Act knew that this was going to be the challenge that you guys are facing. And good, good for you, Laura, to lead your team that way. I really appreciate that. The the other, the only other comment that or question that I really do have on the growth or on the targets, really on the targets, is what happens to a city? Well, let me ask a different question first. Have you experienced in your time doing this that a city has been going in a certain direction and then has said, wow, that's not the way we want to go? We we want to be a different type of city. So I'll give you an example of like, well, is Black Diamond an example of that? Where they were a small little town, and now they've decided that they want to be a big city or a larger city than what they are? So we've seen that scenario take place, correct? So have we seen the opposite happen where a city has actually said, you know what? You know, we don't want to be, I don't want to compete with my neighbors in all areas of growth. Let's call it what it is.
I definitely have had those conversations with with cities, for sure. And Karen, maybe you can weigh in too, because Karen's been doing this longer than I have. So absolutely, I I think, you know, councils change. Growth issues change over time. So I've seen, I've seen that happen. I don't know, Karen, if you want to weigh in here?
Sure, you know, cities change their perspectives over time. But at the, you know, we're still faced with the growth that's coming to the county and that's established by the state Office of Financial Management. And we still have to accommodate this growth. And we're trying to accommodate it in a way that is efficient, that allows us to protect our natural resources at the same time that we're, as you mentioned earlier, working within the constraints of each of the cities. And some cities want to grow bigger and some don't. But it also depends where the infrastructure is and where it isn't. As you mentioned, you know, the city of Samamish especially is in the smaller towns and cities category because you don't have light rail, because you do have infrastructure constraints as opposed to cities that are with, you know, well within light rail stations and so on. So all these factors do play in. At the same time, we are still needing to accommodate projected growth in a way that's, you know, an efficient way to accommodate that growth.
Well, now, my last question that I really want to ask is, is what happens to a city if we just don't? You you give us a number or a number is assigned to us, applied to us, whatever word, whatever word you want to use there. What happens to a city if we just don't meet the goal at all? Like, we don't even come close. You hand us four grand, you know, 4,000, and we hit a fourth of that. What happens to us?
Yeah, I mean, so I'll be handing you anything. As Rebecca talked, that these initial ranges are basically technical ranges. And then we'll be working over the next six months or so with you and with each of the 39 cities in the county to establish a target that makes sense. And that you will then, you know, so this has always been by consensus. And then, you know, as Rebecca said, I think this is the fourth time we're doing this. And it's always been by consensus. And targets, we've always set are policy statements of the cities. Now, within, again, we do have a lot of growth we have to accommodate. But some cities are going to take a greater share than others, and that gets worked out in this process. And then this becomes real through the land use assumptions in your comprehensive plans in 2024. So it's nothing that we give you. The whole purpose we wanted to talk about today was to make sure you understand that this, you're at the beginning of the process. This is a long process and that you are involved, you and your staff will be involved in each step of the way.
Thank Laura and Rebecca and Karen, thank you very much. I turn it back over to you, Mayor, Maureen. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have one more question, and it's from council member Stewart.
Yeah, I just want to thank the King County staff. Their level of expertise and professionalism and effort is, I think, overwhelming and underappreciated by most people. So thank you all very much for that. I want to remind folks too that these growth ranges and targets are over a very long period of time. They're not like next year, right? And that, again, this is a process that we've been going through several iterations over several decades. So it shouldn't be a surprise to anyone that that this process is happening. And that we, as a city, need to figure out how we work within the the region and being an appropriate partner in terms of what makes sense. And we are categorized this time around as a as a small city and town so that we end up at that lower end because of some of the challenges. But it is also then incumbent upon us to understand that the region is growing, the county is growing, and that we have to figure out how we're going to be a part of that. And I think we know that, we have work to do. We don't have a TMP, we don't have a tip, and that's on us. So we have work to do in addition to contributing to this. And I think, you know, we do provide feedback. Certainly, no one is a stranger to providing that feedback. But this, this is an iterative process that goes on for a long time. The the Vision 2050 had a huge period of time for public input. We provide, I went to several information sessions and provided personal input. We, as a city, had an opportunity to provide input. I think council member Trinh, you voted on that at the at the PSRC representing Samamish. So all of these things play together. And I just want the general public to be aware of that, that this isn't, again, something that's being imposed upon us. This isn't something we should look at as a punishment. This is something that we need to look at as, how do we, as the city of Samamish, participate in a region that we all love and benefit from? And how do we, how do we partner with everybody in in this and work together? And so there's Vision 2050, there's the countywide planning processes, or countywide planning processes, and all of that that really have to work together because there are some really important goals in there around reduction of greenhouse gases, reducing time that people spend in their vehicles. You know, just, you you touched on things like the social justice issues. A lot of stuff around the environment, which I think we all care deeply about. And so it's really important that we look at this in terms of how we can work together in the region to accomplish those goals. Because this is not something that happens in a vacuum. That Vision 2050, again, a huge lift with a lot of input. The the information sessions I went to often had over 100 people there providing input from the general public. So so this is, again, just for the the public out there to know that this is not something that happens in the vacuum. This is not something that's being done to us. This is something that's being done with a great deal of data and a great deal of input from all around the region to try to manage this growth that we have in this region in the best way possible for everyone. So thank you again, guys. This is great work.
Okay, so we do have a couple more. We have got council member Ross.
Yeah, council member Stewart represented a real good county council perspective. But I think more direct from the city of Samamish is more akin to what council member Gamlin shared earlier with passion. I think we share that sentiment. We're very concerned about our infrastructure. And so I hope in our second agenda item, internally, we can talk about how we plug in, as Deputy Mayor Malchall mentioned, into the process. Councilmember Stewart is on the GMPC as an FCA member, echoing that. So we don't have a true outside Samamish, Samamish-interested perspective that represents the vision of the city council. So we'll have to talk about that in the next segment. But I want the county to hear that council member Gamlin is not a minority viewpoint. We're very concerned about the growth for Samamish and managing it.
Okay, and I'm going to get put off to the last one one more time because we have got got Councilmember Richie.
Thank you. I wanted to ask the folks that waited for the meeting, and I appreciate you waiting from G M P C or the the growth management folks. In terms of, I appreciate that all cities have unique challenges. We have unique challenges in Samamish that are ours to focus on, honestly. It's the city council's job to to focus on our issues and our specific responsibilities and our, you know, our our geologic issues, our our roads, our infrastructure. We have three different school districts and we've got a lot going on in Samamish. And I know that every city has its own thing. My question to the folks, rather than making a comment, would be what are the other types of solutions, maybe if you can, in short, if possible, because we've gone on a little long here? What are the other solutions that other cities come up with rather than just a hard no, we've had enough versus what else can we do? Are there other options that we can take on that you see or that you can recommend or that you can provide us examples of that other cities do when they try to take on growth in an environmentally cost effective way that, you know, meets the, you know, growth management guidelines yet doesn't cause the city to lose its character? I mean, I think those are the kinds of things that we should be talking about, in my opinion, and not necessarily focused on, you know, a hard yes or a hard no. It's how do we try to meet these guidelines? And I, what is worth, I that I, for me at least, I appreciate that we're trying to to come up with solutions here. And I'm grateful that you guys are here to provide us with some direction at this point, that this is a long, you know, a long process and it's 2050, right? Trying to figure out what we're going to do over a long period of time. And I would just be willing to hear anything you have to say as far as what other jurisdictions do to try to meet those, you know, unique challenges to their cities that we can maybe learn from.
I was just going to say, I think the most important thing is what you're doing right now, you know, to start to start the dialogue and to have a to have a conversation amongst yourself and among your community. And when you're, you know, when you're developing your comprehensive plans, it's the cities that, it's the cities that that I think have the robust conversations that come up with. That's how you come up with, that's what the bottom of planning, you know, is about. And that's how you come up with the the solutions. But also, I think this, you know, this regional caucus discussion is really helpful and having the staff, you know, all together, staff from cities that are facing similar issues, that kind of dialogue can generate good, really good thinking and camaraderie. And there's, there's all kinds of, you know, these are professional planners who've been doing this a really long time. And so that's, those are really important discussions and you have excellent staff, which you're very lucky to have. And so I think just really diving in and I'll invite, you know, Karen and Rebecca if they want to add more to that. But I think you're starting out, you know, starting out with a good foot forward here.
Okay, well, I I think I actually get a chance to speak here and I wanted to take a minute and thank all of you for being here. And it looks to me like the numbers that we've been given are just that, they're numbers. They're the first round, they're they're numbers. They're just, you know, hey, this is what we sketched out without taking anything into account. And so, you know, that to me says this is where the work begins. So I I'm not going to criticize because I think this is where you just start doing your work. So thank you for coming here and thank you for telling me where the starting point is. And yes, we do have, we we have a lot of, we have a lot of things we can tell you about our community. But thank you for coming here. Thank you for a great presentation. And then especially thank you for waiting because it took us a long time to get set up tonight. So thank you for your patience. And I think that's it unless I see anybody else on the chat log there. Nope, I think we're good. Has anybody else got any comments? No, I don't see any. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you for having us. We're happy to come. Yes, thank you.
Okay, so we're going to move forward on our agenda, if I can find it here. Okay. And the next thing that we have is we have got a proclamation that's going to be read by Mr. Ga, Councilmember Gamblin.
Okay, this is a proclamation for the Extra Mile Day, November 2nd, 2020. Samamish, whereas Samamish, Washington is a community which acknowledges that a very special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas Samamish is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas Samamish is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas Samamish acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America to create 500 extra mile cities in America and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November 2nd, 2020. Now therefore, Karen Moran, Mayor of City of Samamish, on behalf of the city council, does hereby proclaim November 2nd, 2020 to be Extra Mile Day. She urges each individual in the community to take time on this day to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but to also acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, or world a better place. Signed the second day of November, 2020, Mayor Karen Moran.
Thank you. And we actually have so many people in our community that that do go the extra mile. So council, it is quarter after nine. And before we get into our public hearings, I think we need to take a five minute break. So we, it is actually about 17 after, so let's say we were back here by nine 25 so we can start our public hearings. For public, it's going to be a few minute break. If you have not taken that opportunity, go get that ballot, fill it out, vote. I don't care how you vote, but vote. Thank you. You ready? Is everybody back? Okay, council, do we have everybody back?
All I see is you and me, Karen.
Oh, darn.
Oh, Jason might be in.
I'm here.
Yeah, Jason, you're in, right?
Ken's in. Jason?
It's Ken.
Oh, that's Ken.
Oh, it's Ken.
Oh, there's Pam. Okay. Three public hearings for the school districts. Okay. And they each have to be opened and closed separately. And then each one has their own motion if they decide to vote on them. Do I have each, well, I have the. Yeah, yeah. Okay. So the, each one will have a public hearing. Okay. And who's speaking to introduce them? I think it might be David Pyle and possibly Lindsay Osborn. Okay. All right, so who am I waiting for here? All right, who am I waiting for? Do we have everybody? Do you see everybody back? Okay, council, is everybody returned?
The only person I haven't seen is Chris.
Okay.
But he may be here.
Well, whoever's not here isn't going to be able to say.
I'm not, I'm not here.
Okay, that's funny.
I'm sleeping.
I tried, Karen.
All right, Chris Ross is here. All right, so we are returning to our city council special meeting on Monday, November 2nd, 2020, and it is nine 25. And we are coming back to our public hearings. This evening, we have three public hearings to consider ordinances to adopt reference to the 20 to 20, 25 six-year capital facilities plans for Issaquah Lake, Washington, and Snoqualmie Valley school districts. Public hearing ordinance relating to school impact fees, adopting the Issaquah School, School Number 411, 20 to 25 six-year capital facilities plan, and establishing an effective date. And it is 020220514. David Pyle, are you on?
Yes, Mayor Moran, David Pyle, Community Development. Tonight, Department of Community Development has Lindsay Osborn here to speak with us and present these these three proposed ordinances. Go to Lindsay.
Thank you, David. Good evening, Honorable Mayor. Councilmember first for the record, Lindsay Osborn, Project Manager for Community Development. Hopefully you all can hear me all right.
Yes. I'm hearing the echo again.
I am hearing that on my end as well. I will continue. Before you this evening, for your consideration and to accept public testimony, are the 2020 to 2025 six-year capital facilities plans, which are updated on an annual basis, and associated 2021 school impact fees for the Issaquah Lake, Washington, and Snoqualmie Valley school districts. As Mayor mentioned, we are hearing the Issaquah Capital Facilities Plan first for public hearing this evening. But this statement does apply to all three districts. Ordinances for each have been included with the agenda packet materials. Each of these districts have conducted their own public process, issuing their own CIPA checklist and CIPA determinations of non-significant decisions, and those decisions were not appealed. Each school board then held public meetings and adopted their capital facilities plans along with the school impact fees as described in the CFPs, otherwise known as capital facilities plans, along for the 2021 calendar year. There are three public hearings, as you're aware, for this evening. And each one is being considered individually. I'd like to point out that we do have Denise Stifarm, legal counsel for the three districts, present this evening, along with Jake Cooper with the Issaquah School District. Brian Buck with the Lake Washington School District is also on the line. And then I did see Ryan Stokes with the Snoqualmie Valley School District on the line earlier this evening, but I'm not seeing him currently, so I'm not sure if he's with us still. This does complete my introduction of the items for this evening. But before we conduct the first hearing on the agenda for the Issaquah School District, I'll ask if there's any questions of staff or any of the school district representatives at this time. Okay, I'm not hearing any. So with that, Mayor Moran, I'll hand this item over to you to open the public hearing for the Issaquah School District Capital Facilities Plan and School Impact Fees and accept test public testimony.
Okay, thank you. Again, this is the public hearing that we're going to open and it is for the Issaquah School District, Number 411. And this is for the six-year capital facilities plan and establishing an effective date. And so we're going to open the hearing. And this is to see if we have any public comment. Lita, did we have any public comment that has called in or any emails or anything that have come in on this topic?
We did not have any public comment.
Okay, we have no public comment on this. Do we have anybody, any, hang on, let me, woo, okay. Do we have anybody from, any, anybody on the, hang on for a second, I'm going to type this in. So that you guys, let's not get our questions all mixed up. Okay. Now, council members, do we have any questions? Okay, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. I do have a few questions as it relates to student generation rates and how those are calculated for any given development. I'm trying to understand if the numbers that are on the, within your capital facilities plan here, is it, are they calculated at the time the house is sold and has, you know, its occupancy certificate at the time the entire development has sold out? Are you calculating these based on the actual student enrollments to the schools to which these neighborhoods impact? Or how, I, the reason I'm asking is I can't make my own neighborhood's numbers work with the kids that are in the neighborhood. So I'm just trying to understand how you calculate these.
And Tiffany, Mayor Malchow, would you like me to take that question directly? This is Jacob Cooper from the school district.
Sure.
So our generation factors are a point in time and they're updated annually. So and the developments before you are either have been completed, they're no older than five years or portions of the development are no older than five years of age. Every fall, after our September or October enrollments run, I have our transportation department update the generation rates of all the newer developments, which you see on your plan. So those are basically the students enrolled as of a cert, date certain divided by the total number of housing units in that block of housing. So we use our G I S or our transportation system, which allows us to count students at each address. And then, of course, from housing data, we have a third party software provider that also provides us the number of units in each housing development before you.
So I wanted to clarify something I thought I heard you say, that no development is older than five years?
Or a portion of, yes. So you won't see developments like, you know, see Kohani on there as an example. Kohani is not a new development. It's a very mature set of housing and has been, what, you know, 40 years old probably now, parts of it anyway. So it is standard practice for us to use developments of five years or newer in the calculation so that we get the most current rate possible as we calculate the fee. Because, you know, housing, as you all know, being in the chair of the governance at the council level, you know that decisions are made on housing mix and stock and timing of development all the time. And so we, years ago, agreed upon when establishing the impact fee with King County, or at least this program in the early 90s, that we would only use newer development in calculation. Now, some districts around a region of smaller nature may, they take composite rate and I'd have to have Denise Stifarm speak to that because they use our rate instead of their company's, their own.
Yeah, hi, Deputy Mayor Malchow, this is Denise Stifarm with Pacific Law Group and who I work with all three of these school districts with their capital facilities plan. And as Jake mentioned, the five-year window is a key component and that window is based upon when a home is constructed and occupied. And so, for example, if you look in Appendix D to the Lake Washington School District Capital Facilities Plan, you'll see that they have a list of developments and they have a total number of units, they have units occupied, but they also recognize that there are some units still to be occupied and those units are not included in their calculation. So they're, they're making that, updating those roles every year as a part of this effort. And the reference that Mr. Cooper just made to Snoqualmie Valley is true. Their district, because they don't have a good sample set, they borrow their rates from their neighbors. And so theirs is a composite of what's going on in their two neighboring districts. The the final piece that I'll just reference with regard to one of your comments is I think it's absolutely true that you're looking around your neighborhood and you may be seeing more students than are matching up with certain generation rates. And that really is a function of that five-year window because because as developments mature, it is more likely than not, and I think this can go both ways, that there will be more students residing in those homes than there were in the initial five-year look. But the statutory direction is to look at the impacts of new development, and that five-year window is a defensible way to look at those new development impacts.
And additionally, we're only counting public school children as well in our counts. So.
That was one of the other questions I had. I wasn't sure if that's all you're counting in those rates. And just to clarify, you said something about no older than five years. Is that the whole development is not older than five years? Or that they were still selling within that five-year window? Because you have a development that's 10 years old.
Right, and so it gets, I always look at if they're continuing to sell. So it gets a little tricky if you look at, like, Issaquah Highlands, for example. There's been so many stages and phases in builders that you won't see the entire development in the capital facilities plan, but a portion thereof of the most current development. So, you know, there is no, I don't think, it's not set in statute, Christie, at all on kind of your methodology there, particularly when there's large phase developments with multiple LLCs and builders that can take 25 to 30 years to build out some of our big master plans. But for me, mostly what I do is I'll look at development when it started to sell, and then when it's been fully sold. And then it won't sit on the rolls any longer than five years after it's fully sold out.
Okay, okay. All right, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, next I have got Councilmember Ritchie.
Thank you. Directing the folks like Washington to, I guess it's a question for everybody, but you have a nice little chart here on page 124 of our PAC, Public Hearings Number 7, Appendix D. And I'm looking at the totals column for essentially single-family homes generating .67 of a student per home, and multifamily homes or multifamily developments generating .151 of a student. And I'm assuming that is, I guess my big question is, is there something that, you know, we're the Smamish City Council. We're not like just the, you know, we have several school districts who are trying to figure out what the best type of housing we need going forward that's going to be able to essentially utilize the available school district space, classroom space, or whatever that's going to look like in the future. How do we house people? What's the right model that we should have going forward? And what stood out to me when I was looking at this was the .67 for a student, a single-family home versus the .151 for a multifamily home. Is there more detailed information specifically about Smamish when it comes to single-family developments versus multifamily developments? And do those percentages hold?
So this Denise Stifarm again, and I know Brian Buck is on the line. So I'll let Brian speak first specifically to that, and then I'll do a follow-up.
Yeah, so in the table, it's not specific to Smamish. But if you, if you wanted us to pull those numbers specific to Smamish developments, we can certainly do so.
I'd appreciate that, thank you.
And I will say, Councilmember, this is Mr. Cooper from Issaquah. That housing mix definitely plays a role in that student generation rate. And I have seen it change over time as particularly multifamily. And I had this discussion with several of you on the, on the phone tonight about, you know, when cities choose to do multiple bedroom, multifamily housing, that's just going to generate more kids than if they were one and two-bedroom or one-bedroom studios. And then, of course, on the single-family side, what I see, at least in Issaquah, obviously is price point of the number of bedrooms. It's not, it's pretty intuitive of what drives the student generation. And I think you would, even though our plans are completely three different plans before you tonight, you would see some of those same themes in the housing mix and in the versus, the single family versus the multifamily, so.
And I appreciate that. I get, just to follow up real quickly, if I can, Mayor. So that it's the type of multi, I mean, I guess that's the totals that we're dealing with at the bottom, right? So the, when you look at all those different, different multifamily developments on Appendix D, there's a couple dozen of them, right? I mean, but, so that's an overall one-bedroom studio, three-bedroom condo, townhome, all the way up. The general number, the, the total number, the average, I guess, I'm assuming, is .1, 1, .15 for multifamily. And whether it's a three-bedroom home or a McMansion, .67 for a single-family home. And that's taking into consideration everything from price point, an average of bedroom size, everything for each different type of development, single-family or multifamily. Is that a fair statement?
No.
Yes, sir, as long as they are within that five-year window, as discussed earlier.
Okay, no, that's what I wanted to clarify. And that, and that to me is, that's part of what we talked about when our land use and how we're going to go about trying to make sure we have enough room for students to be able to go to school. Depends a lot on the type of, you know, housing that we have. And that's a really important point for us to be able to look at as we go forward, not just for our, our school district impact fees, but our land use conversations going forward. So thank you.
Yeah, and if I could just add, this is Denise Stifarm again, just to follow, follow up on that point. I work with school districts across the county and in other counties in the state as well on school impact fee issues. And I will tell you that the, it really depends upon the demographics of a particular area in terms of what the student generation rates look like and whether there are more children living in single-family homes versus multifamily units. And it also shifts, as Mr. Cooper mentioned, over time. I can tell you right now, in South King County, where they have larger multifamily bedroom units, they are generating more students out of multifamily than they are of a single family. But I can also tell you that, for example, in the North Shore School District, they have some very large townhome units with multiple bedrooms. And they keep expecting to see a lot of children, but it just hasn't been happening. It's something they're watching very closely as more families move into those units. But just to date, it hasn't happened. So that's another reason why the school districts update these rates every year.
I appreciate that very much. And whom, the gentleman that's with before, if that is something that you guys can nail down for us in Smamish to help us figure this out going forward, I'd really appreciate. If that's not a heavy lift, I don't want to put more burden on anybody. But this is the kind of detail that we really need to help us, you know, get the data to be able to have informed decisions for Smamish-specific housing as it relates to our, our school districts and our responsibilities to our students and families. So thank you.
And you bet, Councilmember, if you, if you want to have, Deputy Mayor Malcho has a pre-existing relationship with me because she's been fortunate enough to serve on some levy and boundary, or levy and bond committees over the years. If you want to put together a list for, to pass on to her for some specific developments, and you want to see how they look, we can do that. Obviously, you know, several hundred would not be the most fun thing for my staff to do. But if you want to grab a scatter, you know, the top 20 or so, we'd be more than happy to help you with that.
I will do that. I'll work with the deputy mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, and then I had a question for the Lake Washington School District. And last year, I sat through numerous meetings with the previous superintendent. And this goes back again to houses, single-family homes versus multifamily homes. And it really, what it came down to was how many bedrooms it had. And so, because what they were finding, and she said they were, they were trying to go out and do those new findings and sending it off for reports and that sort of thing, was it was coming down to some of these, these larger units, especially when we were comparing to some of our condos and stuff that were going in in Smamish, where they were having three bedrooms that were coming in in a condo, were coming in to be just as many kids coming out of one of those as you were seeing out of a single-family home. So are we seeing that throughout? Or are we seeing that just in, in little pocket areas? Or is that throughout the district that you're seeing that? Or is that, you know, can you tell me a little bit more about that in the Lake Washington School District area?
Well, let me make sure I understand your question. So you're saying, yes, we are seeing that higher bedroom units in multifamily are starting to generate more kids in the student generation rates. So, for example, in our Appendix D, Redmond Ridge apartment is an outlier. They have three, four, and five-bedroom apartments there. And they're generating a total, it looks like 1.765 students just for that comp. So there are definitely a higher bedroom rate the more kids are being generated.
Okay, so are, so is that figured in then? Any place, when you've got those in your, as you're looking at those, when you're looking at the entire district, are you including? When you look at your map, when you get plans for a new development coming in, whether it be Smamish or Kirkland or wherever, do you find out how many bedrooms are coming in in each unit so that you can plan accordingly?
I'll have to look exactly what data we're collecting in that fashion. But essentially, yes, we're seeing a slow, steady trend of higher student generate, student generation rates in multifamily within our district. But it is an exponential. So, but we're, yeah, we're tracking that and how many bedroom units.
Okay, all right, let's, I'm going to go, oh, okay, Councilmember Stewart.
I think Christie had more questions if she wants to finish up. And then, and then I'll take my turn.
Is that okay, Karen? Thank you, Pam. Yeah, so I think to Jason's question, that may be answered. Your questions about the rates and townhomes can partly be answered in their, their charts that are in here. They actually give the generation rates on all the multifamily units. So you can go and find the ones that are in Smamish and then look at the student generation rates coming out of them. So that may, may be a help. And just for an example, there's two that are in the Lake Washington School District in Smamish that turned out 57 kids, according to the numbers. And those were, that's multifamily, not single-family. So that is what I believe is the Ichijo, although it doesn't call it Ichijo. So I'm not clear if it's Ichijo. That was a question I had for the Lake Washington School District. But we're on the Issaquah School District right now. And then the Sky Apartments are in there. So you can see the generation rates there. But embedded in Snohomish County code, and this is a little bit to what Councilmember Ritchie was saying, they actually classify townhomes as single-family homes. And so for the North Shore School District, they actually have a rate, and they've broken it out between single-family homes, townhomes, and then multifamily. And they do break out multifamily by two-plus bedrooms. So they have four different rates rather than two, like we do. So that's just as an FYI. But one more question for Jake, and I wanted to clarify that I was looking at this correctly and then, you know, kind of highlight it if in fact what I see is correct, which is you are 462 students over at Skyline High School. Did I read that right?
That would be correct.
Okay, and you're 215 students over at Issaquah High School. Is that correct?
That is correct.
That's a lot.
Those schools, Issaquah High and Skyline are in the, the last time I looked, I think they're seventh and fifth of the largest. So they're both in the top 10 for the two largest high schools in the state of Washington, those two, as a point of reference for their size.
Okay, perfect, thank you. I have other questions for the other districts, Karen. I don't know if you want me to dive into those, but because we're on the Issaquah, I was kind of leaving my questions for that.
Yeah, yeah.
You want all our questions?
If we can, let's just, okay. Pam, do you want to? And let's stick with Issaquah so we can get one district done at a time.
Sure, two quick questions. One is, it's my understanding, especially from Issaquah, that your estimates over time have been pretty spot on. Is that an accurate statement? Can you give us a more mathematically sound response? How accurate are your estimates when you, when you go back and double-check in terms of planning? Because.
And I assume, Councilmember Stewart, you're talking about enrollment projections?
Yeah.
I think over the last 20 years, I'll exclude myself from this year because pandemics, believe it or not, are not my demographic models. I think the historical running average is about 70 students difference, plus or minus. I'll put on the plus side because I'm more conservative over the last 20 years. So, and that's the model, and I've been doing the model for 17, so.
And that's 70 students out of how many?
Roughly, we were just already to crest 21,000. And of course, we lost nearly 1,200 due to the pandemic enrollment. We will see. So historically, yes, very accurate, really tested. I'm being tested this next year. It will depend upon, of course, what program we're offering and what schools look like in general, and how many kiddos we have to come back. Hopefully, we have.
Well, yeah, every, everything's very different now. And then the, the second question I have is, Deputy Mayor brought up Issaquah High School and Skyline High School. But won't both of those schools be able to offload students when the new Issaquah High School opens?
Yes, and I, I know the council is familiar with that matter. The site that the school district has chosen is just about equidistant between the two, as the crow flies. But I'd take approximately 600 to 700 students out of each of those two schools and boundary about, depends upon the opening between 1200 and 1400 students.
Okay.
The new high school number four.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm not seeing others in here. But I wanted to hit back on, on the number of students that we have. Because I'm looking at the different, and I'm looking at the elementary schools, and I'm seeing Challenger Creekside, Discovery, Sunny Hills. And I'm seeing, you know, all these negative numbers as far as capacity. And with the same with our, you know, Beaver Lake and Pine Lake up here as negative. So I'm seeing it, you know, that there's just not a whole lot of room in our, in any of our schools up here. And unless I'm reading that wrong, there just isn't any room, not in any of them. I've got, I'm trying to see if there is any, anything but negative numbers. Am I reading that wrong?
No, Mayor, is the mayor speaking, sorry?
Yes, it is, I'm sorry, yes.
Yes, no, you're correct. And that, that is, of course, why we're citing Elementary 16, right in Smamish. And as you know, the district from the capital facilities plan, and we have 200-plus portable classrooms district-wide to alleviate those capacity issues, at least on a short-term basis.
Yeah, this, this brings me as to why we need to be working better with the school district to have, perhaps have better talks with them on when we build. Okay, is there any other questions that we have to, for the Issaquah School District? Okay, not hearing any then, and we have no other public comment. Okay, then I think we can close the Issaquah hearing. Then I'm going to close the public hearing for the Issaquah School District. And then I need to hear the pleasure of the council of what they would like to do with that.
And move adoption of the Issaquah School District impact fees.
Second.
Okay, so I have a first from Deputy Mayor and a second from Councilmember Stewart. And discussion, councilmembers? I'm going to discuss. I think that I don't have a problem, I guess, with us doing anything with this. But I think in the long run, we really need to have better contact with our school districts because we don't have any room in our classrooms. And before we get into this position, I think we need to be really looking at having something, and David Pyle and I have talked about this, about having, like, you do for a- and David Pyle and I have talked about this, about having like a, you do for a water certificate, you know, go send them to the district and have them sign off that there's room in the darn school for the kids. So I, I'll be voting for this, but I think we need to do better. Any other comments, any discussion, any? All right, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
And who was the nay? I don't know who was that, Ken. Um, I need to know who the nay was. Keep in mind, I can't see the pic, can't see faces today.
I don't think there was a nay.
Okay. Okay, okay, could have been, just been an echo. Okay.
Maybe a late aye, maybe.
Okay, there you go. So I have a seven zero then. Perfect. Okay, so the next thing we have is then the public hearing that we are going to open. And it is for, uh, relating to the school impact fees for the Lake Washington School District 414, for the 2020-2025 six-year capital facilities plan, um, and establishing an effective date. This is for 02020-515. And again, uh, Mr. Pyle, I think that we've had a lot of discussion, but I'm going to, going to let you start this.
Yes, I'll, I'll pass it off to Lindsay Oswald. Um, this is, uh, public hearing, I believe. Lindsay, you want to?
Sure, this is Lindsay Oswald. I don't have any additional, uh, reading for council. Unless you have specific questions from the Lake Washington School District, I can try and answer. Our representatives.
Okay. Sorry about that. Okay, um, so I've opened the hearing. Do we have any, um, anybody on call, on waiting, or do we have any letters from the public on this issue?
I did not receive any phone calls tonight from, for the Issaquah.
Okay, so we have no public input on this, um, ordinance. And so I'm going to go, um, looking in the chat box. I don't have anybody signed in, uh, or who has signed up?
Yeah, I'm in there, Karen.
Okay, well, then I have to go back. Oh, there I see you. Okay. So, um, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. Um, so I want to make sure I'm reading, um, the chart correctly, and it looks like Margaret Mead Elementary, which was just rebuilt, has capacity for just 24 more students, according to their enrollment. Did I read that correctly?
I'm sorry, I couldn't understand. Can you repeat the question?
Thank you. Sure. So for the Lake Washington School District's calculation for capacities, I think I'm looking at this correctly, but I'm, I'm just looking for clarification. That Margaret Mead Elementary School, which was just rebuilt in Sammish, only has room for 24 new students as of the numbers that are on here. Am I reading that correctly?
Yep.
Before it's at capacity again?
Yeah, I'm looking at it here. Hold on. Correct, yes.
Okay. So, and it looks like, you know, basically exactly what the mayor was pointing out, which is our schools are, are very full. And while it looks to be, you know, maybe a little bit more capacity in some of the Lake Washington schools, um, it's pretty telltale when you just finished rebuilding a school and then you only have 24 seats left in it. So. Um, and then one other note that I had in here, and I would probably duplicate this for all three school districts as a comment, and, you know, I, I may potentially look for council direction at the end of these three hearings, which is the capital facilities plans as adopted by the school district incorporates King County Code. It says that on the top. It says estimated school impact fee calculations based on King County Code 21.a.43. And what I would request of the school districts, um, as a, a measure that will facilitate our council is to not utilize King County Code when you are dealing with multiple jurisdictions. Because King County Code has the, um, and you get to it at the end, which is the Lake Washington School District calls it the 50% local share. And that's because I think everyone has adopted that 50% or divide by two as we have it in our code. And I, what I see is the district's actually applying city code, um, to their capital facilities plans when that's probably one step beyond, um, the calculation that should come to us. Because if we alter that percentage, which at the end of these three hearings, I'm going to make the suggestion that council gives some direction to our city manager on, um, then if you don't do that percentage of local share and let each jurisdiction or municipality apply whatever it is that they have in their code, um, that would prevent the district from having to do multiple of these and allow us to apply our own code to it. So that if we don't have 50% or divide by two in our code, um, at, you know, at another time next year, um, then it just allows us to, um, apply our own code to your formula. Um, so that would be my request on that.
Okay, council, it is 10 o'clock, so I need to extend our meeting. So I need, let's go for, we better go to at least 11.
Move to extend to 11, yeah.
Can I get a second on that?
Can't train second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Sorry, Christie, were you finished?
Yeah, no, I, I do have, I do have one more question. Okay, so as I look at the, um, the generation rates for the Lake Washington School District, um, I see the Sky Sammish Apartments, and then just below that, it says Southeast Village Townhomes. I'm trying to figure out if that's the Ichijo development that's in Sammish or if that's something else, because I don't see Ichijo on here.
Um, this is Kelly Hildy, Deputy Director of Community Development. The Southeast Villages is the Ichijo development.
Okay. All right, so then, okay, and the SAM Apartments, is that also the, the other town center development just off, we said up to 28th? Okay.
Yeah, that one, that I was referring to is Toto 120.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's, yeah. Okay, and that's why I was kind of having a difficult time trying to ascertain multifamily rates that were Sammish-centric. So I will point out to council that that is 58 students in total between those three developments.
Okay, so, um, Christie, are you finished? I guess. Christie, did you ask all your questions?
No, I'm done, no, that was it.
Okay. Okay, so, um, I'm gonna go on my, my little soapbox with the same, same rigmarole I did in the last one. I want to point out that out of our elementary schools in the Lake Washington School District, we are over capacity at Blackwell, Carson, McCullough, and Smith. The only one we are not at is the new one by 24 spots, and that is Mead. We are over capacity at Inglewood. We are over capacity at Eastlake. Again, it leads me to, I will, I'm gonna vote for this, but I really, really want to see something done ASAP with better coordination as to the city having something to, um, you know what, need to have them sign off. It's just to me as, just as important as going and getting a water certificate as it is for a spot for your kids to go to school. So I think we need to work really hard on that. Next one is Councilmember Gamblin.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to throw a quick observation in there. My laptop died, so I apologize, I don't have the, um, the council in front of me. But when I was looking at these, um, noticing as the mayor and the deputy mayor pointed out how at capacity our schools are in Sammish. And I want to point out that over the last number of years, we've had the ability to absorb some of this growth by adding portables. And that, from what I understand, we are at the point where we no longer even have room to add more portables. So I, I agree with the mayor that we need to look very closely as we're going along and say, where are these students actually gonna go? Um, because I live near Margaret Mead, brand new school, um, and it's basically at capacity. There's no way to increase the capacity of that school. So we, we need to look at this fairly closely as we're going along. That's all, thank you.
Councilmember Train?
I just wanted to echo your remarks, Madam Mayor. I agree with you wholeheartedly on, on that. Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I just want to encourage, um, our constituents to vote for the bonds. Um, Lake Washington School District has had a challenging time getting the bonds passed, and, uh, we need to help them out. If, uh, we want them to be able to build more schools, and I, I would agree, I think we need much closer coordination between the city and the school districts to help them get the funding that they need and help them find locations to build more facilities. So, um, as you said, Mayor, get out and vote, and, uh, please help the school districts. They, they can't build, they can't build new schools with no money.
Okay, do we have anybody else who's got any, uh, input? Comments? Okay, hearing none. I am going to close, I'm gonna close the public hearing for the adoption of the six-year capital facilities plan for the Lake Washington School District. The ordinance number 02020-515, and I'm looking for a motion.
Move to adopt.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Second.
And who was that second? That must have been Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Thank you. All those in favor? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Excellent, thank you. Okay, the last one we have this evening is for the Snoqualmie School District. It's a public hearing that we are going to open for the Snoqualmie School District, number 410, and it is for their six-years capital facilities plan, establishing an effective date. And the number is 02020-516. Do we have any public comment this evening on this?
We do not have any public comment.
Okay, we have no public comment. Um, I am looking for, uh, looking into the chat box. Do I have anybody who wants to comment on this from, um, anybody on council? Seriously, nobody has anything to say? No.
Move to adopt.
Excellent.
Second. Oh, I think you have to close the public hearing first though, don't you?
Yeah.
Okay, so I am going to close the public hearing. Um, and then I heard the motion, and I believe that was that Councilmember Ritchie?
Sure was.
Oh, I see, can hear that voice. Okay, Councilmember Ritchie, seconded by Councilmember Stewart. And, um, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Seven zero. Excellent, thank you. Thank you to all the school district folks that are online. Deputy Mayor, did you have a question?
Uh, no, but I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to move that council give direction to our city manager to investigate the plausibility of changing Title 21a.105.100, which is, um, our impact fees and the calculations, because right now, um, we use divide by two, and I would like to, um, have the city manager get, have direction as to altering that. And if I get a second, I will speak to my motion.
Second, Councilmember Train.
Can you repeat that?
Yes, um, Councilmember Stewart, I'm, I'm asking to give direction to our city manager to investigate looking at the portion of our code, and it's, oh, I just put it down, 21a.105.100, um, which is the impact fee calculation. I'm not asking to mess with the formula at all. I'm just, we are applying divide by two, and I'm asking that we look at some other, divide by something else.
Excellent, thank you.
I heard a second. If I can speak to my motion.
Okay, I do.
Yeah, Ken Gamblin seconded.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Ken Gamblin was the second. Okay, uh, council, uh, Deputy Mayor, please speak to your motion.
Thank you. So currently, um, we, um, basically we did a cut and paste of King County Code when, um, the city, um, incorporated back in 1999. And when I say cut and paste, I mean literally a cut and paste. We substituted in the city of Sammish words at King County. So by virtue, we simply adopted their divide by two language, um, on our impact fee calculation for the school districts. Um, the, the districts, um, have calculated out in there, all, all three of them are in there. So what we had in the Isqwa School District, the single-family resident, um, impact fee was $36,426. The state law prevents us from having to, to be able to collect the full impact, um, but we don't have to divide in half. And from my vantage point, what I see is an unfair burden upon existing residents that live here, um, to pay a, a larger portion of building the capital facilities than is needed. Um, we would not be trailblazers for this. The city of Duval has already done this with the Riverside School District. They are now, um, basically at 25% instead of 10%, um, as far as the dividing it. So they've basically shifted the burden away from their taxpaying base a little bit. And while I want to be clear, um, for constituents that might be listening, the school districts do not rake in cash in impact fees anyway. Um, most of what our, um, schools are built on is the bonds. And I think Councilmember Stewart spoke to that earlier. Um, in fact, I think back in 2017, the Issaquah School District, I think it collected $49 million, yet I think they had spent like a billion dollars. So it gives you the relevance between how much they collect an impact fee in total and then how much they actually have to spend, um, in order to construct these capital facilities that put our kids in schools. We just heard a ton about how many, um, kids we have in Sammish schools that are over capacity, so it's clear they need to build more schools. And I'm just simply looking to make it a little bit more fair in terms of shifting where the impact goes. And before we hear that we're going to make housing more unaffordable, I'm going to say, please find me a new construction, single-family house in Sammish under a million dollars. And if you start looking at multifamily, you're not gonna do much better, because a lot of the townhomes that are being sold here in Sammish are $700,000 or $800,000. So if we change our multiplier here from divide by two to something a little bit, um, more in the favor of our residents, um, we're not talking about, um, making what's already unaffordable more unaffordable. What we're talking about is collecting a larger impact fee upfront to help pay for the capital facilities. And the way I see it is that the district then has to go back out to its taxpayers and get less of a bond than it would otherwise. It, is it gonna be significant? No, but I do think we should be shifting the burden where the burden is, and that is on the impact of new development. So, thank you.
Okay, so, uh, councilmembers, does anybody have any questions regarding the motion? Councilmember Stewart?
Well, Christie, just because you brought it up, no, um, I just want to, uh, throw in there that, uh, I totally support doing this. Um, I, I would like us to figure out for housing that is specifically designated as affordable housing, that we figure out ways to make sure that, um, in order to keep it in that range, that they aren't cutting corners otherwise. So, uh, again, completely in favor of, um, having the higher impact fees. I think that our school districts, uh, need the money, whatever money that is. They're looking under sofa cushions at this point, so, uh, any help we can give them is great. Uh, but I do want for housing that is actually, um, designated as affordable housing, that we make sure we have a way to, uh, buffer. make sure we have a way to buffer if it is a significant cost to them. And I think there are ways to deal with that. So, that would be my...
It's in your hood already.
Yep. So, that's, so it's not that I'm concerned that it's not going, you know, our housing in Sammamish is already not affordable, but we should be building housing that is, in fact, affordable, and we shouldn't be making this burden on those folks trying to buy those houses.
Counselors, are there any other questions on this? Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I just, Councilmember Stewart, a great point. I just wanted to at least point out the fact that we do have a discount available, and it is, it's already in our code, and it's right here in this Title 21A for impact fees. So...
Yep, I just don't want to see that go away.
Nope, not advocating for that to go away at all.
Any other discussion? Okay, hearing done. Then I'm going to call for the vote on this. Motion on the floor. Kristi, please state your motion.
Yeah, it's just to give direction to the city manager to altering Title 21A.100.105, which is our impact fees, and altering divide-by-two language specifically.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, seven zero. Okay, while we're on a roll, I'm gonna, I'd like to make a motion as well, and it's going to go toward the same ordinance, which is the 21A.60.090. It's actually already in our books. And this leads to, we already have the ordinance that's already on the books that states that we will work with the districts in finding to make sure that we have room and capacity in the schools. And we've even gotten letters that have come to the, come to the city, saying, you know, we don't have room, or please don't build. I've got one here that is for the San Tony Platte, another one that was for a plaque going down 244th. And you know what? We need to put weight on the fact that when these do come in from the school districts, and they're saying, there's no room, there's no room. And it shouldn't even have to come to council. You know, when these guys say, there's no room, there's no room. And so, I think we need to, my motion is that we actually, it's already on the books, that we push the staff to look at what we need to do to have in place and to utilize what is on the books, and how we can tighten that up to look at making sure we have got some sort of practice in place of seeing what is available for student spots in our, student availability in our schools, and what we are getting for new plans for development.
Mayor, can I ask a clarifying question, just so I understand? Are we talking about concurrency here?
Yes. And it's already on the books.
Okay, then can you...
It's on the 21A.60.090. And so, it goes to the city...
Point of order, is there a second, or no?
Yes.
Not yet.
So, that would be, so I'm looking for a second.
I'll second.
I have a good question.
So, that would be, so basically, we would have to come up with some sort of, and this would be David Pyle, and I know he's already working on it, and he's actually even started conversation with the districts on it, but this is to keep this on the forefront of, we are down to limited space. We have got to find a way and keep this in the forefront of, you know, we're limited in space, and how do we make sure that this, that we have room for these kids that are coming in?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Gamblin, second.
Great. Thank you. Discussion and, oh, okay, so, okay, Councilmember Ritchie?
Thank you. I guess I'm supportive of what I think is already happening and what I think is already in our books. That's what I'm a little confused about, Mayor, in terms of what this motion does beyond the concurrency that we already have relative to, you know, school districts and available classroom space that is part of our concurrency, the permanent applications that every developer goes through. Is that not happening already? And if it's not, then I strongly support your motion. But I kind of thought we were already doing that. And if we are already doing that, what are you proposing that's different?
Mayor, Mayor Moran, David Pyle, I could provide some...
Take it away, Chris. Yes, thank you.
Yeah, so, Councilmember Ritchie, one of the issues we have is, we have this code that was adopted in 1999 that includes some remnant language from King County. It has reference to process that we don't, we don't have, we don't, things we don't do, a UPD approval, for example. And we, when I came on board to the city almost exactly five years ago now, the cultural practice of the city and how the city staff were routing things to the school district, working with the school district roughly follows the form of what the code prescribes. However, that practice is a little afield from the exact letter of what the code says. So, what we would be doing is working to tighten up the actual practice versus what the code says versus what best practice is, and ensuring that when a development of a certain scale is proposed in the city, that the developer is required to communicate with the school district to make sure the school district is, number one, aware, and number two, the school district is able to confirm that there is school capacity available within the timeframe of when that school is, or excuse me, when that development is anticipated to come online. So, we do follow a form. We communicate regularly with the school districts. We do send out notifications to them. We hold stakeholder meetings like we did in the case of the San Tony rezone. However, we're looking to clean that up, and we're looking to make sure that our code is aligned with our practice, and that is all aligned with best practice.
Can I, can I, I, thank you, David. That's really kind of, I mean, honestly, I'm a little surprised that that's, that we're dealing with something that's that antiquated. I kind of thought that happened already. I know I've seen some letters that have gone back and forth from the Lake Washington School District to some of the developments in the town center. So, I'm, obviously, I think it's a good idea that we're trying to, you know, codify that. I kind of thought it was codified, and that's just ignorance on my part, and I apologize. But if the intent is to try to codify what is best practice, because that is not in, essentially, legacy King County code, then I get it. You know, that makes a lot of sense to me, that we should be doing that in terms of making sure that there is proper integration, or at least communication, documented communication between developments of whatever size, whatever we, you know, the council decides we're going to do, and the school districts, so that there are no surprises, so that we are essentially developing concurrently. And otherwise, how else are people going to know what's actually happening, what's going in, until suddenly X number of students appear on a, you know, first day of school, and they had no idea that they were coming? I mean, that's concerning, obviously. So, we have to figure out how to properly communicate. And if, Mayor, is that what, I mean, did David Pyle communicate what you're trying to do here? Is that a fair statement? I think it sounds reasonable to me if it is. If that's...
Yes, that's exactly right, because we had, one of these letters that I have a copy of was for a hearing for a plaque down on 244th, and it wasn't entered, basically, the hearing examiner, you know, didn't really care about it at that point in time, because it was something that he felt the city should have dealt with early on, sort of thing. So, we need to, we need to take care of this and really work with the districts early on. So, it's something we need to fix.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, um, okay.
Mayor, I have a question. I don't know if you can see in the queue.
Yeah, sorry, I'm keeping up. I'm playing with my microphone here. So, okay, next question I have is Councilmember Ross, followed by Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Kind of follow-up question to David Pyle. It sounds like we don't have a consistent follow-up, that the districts don't provide feedback on that reach per the code currently. So, David, are we going to make sure that we develop something that affirmatively certifies that the school has responded and made a determination, and if they have not, that we deem the application not complete?
So, what we would be looking to do, and this is just roughly sketched out at this point, and I appreciate the discussion with the council and the firm direction and interest. You know, when we prioritize things in our work plan, it's always based on what we understand to be, you know, truly expressed interest on an issue by the council. So, appreciate this. The idea, you know, and there's a couple of different ways of going at this. Mayor Moran identifies a process that's used with water and sewer availability, and when a developer has an idea about a project, they come into the city, and they also, at the same time, head over to the water and sewer district to verify that there is water or sewer availability for that project. If there is not water or sewer availability, they likely will ask about when that might become available, or what it would cost to bring that, that water or sewer capacity online. And then that developer is able to make their educated decision as part of their due diligence as to whether they want to pursue the project. So, what we would be doing is working with the school districts to try to create a system similar to that, the skeleton, the structure of which is roughly already in the code under And we would be working to front-load the process where, when a developer has an idea, not only do they go to the city and the water and sewer district, but they also visit the school district. And there's a form that the city provides that they bring into the school district, and the school district then engages with the developer to indicate whether or not there is capacity at that point in time. So, please understand that this is only a snapshot in time when a developer is down there talking to the school district. But at that point in time, you know, whether or not there is capacity for the estimated number of units of the development based on the unit generation rate, which you were talking about previously, and as to whether or not there would be capacity in those schools where the students from the development would be slated to attend school. And then if the developer brings that back, then it's a complete application. There is adequate capacity, much like water and sewer. If there wasn't water or sewer capacity, we would not deem the application complete. One option here is that you can use CIPA as a tool and require an EIS be done if there is determined to be inadequate infrastructure. So, depending on the number of units, you could use CIPA as a tool here as well. We're looking at that. So, there are some different options, and with this direction, we will continue to engage the districts to figure out with them, you know, what is possible with them, because they are also going to have to invest in staff time in this as well. But also to understand, you know, what is the right size here? And how do we make sure communication's working? How do we make sure that this is a process that is something that is attainable for everyone involved, if that makes sense?
Thank you, David. Okay, so, next I have got, I believe that was Councilmember Ross. It's getting late. Okay, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. Yeah, so, generally speaking, I'm supportive of this, and I think, you know, the impact fee discussion we just had in those public hearings are a good way to shine the spotlight on the fact that our schools are overcrowded. And as I read the code, 21A.60.120, school concurrency standard, schools shall be considered to have been provided concurrently with the development that will impact the school if the permanent and interim improvements necessary to serve the development are planned to be in place at the time the impacts of development are expected to occur. There's a lot of ors in here as well, but it tends to highlight the fact that it's clear that the construction of schools is not happening concurrently with development, hence the reason Skyline High School has got more than 400 students, more than it's designed to hold. But that being said, I do have a question, and David, you kind of started to hit on it a little bit, which is, can we even require that the district provide or do a concurrency certificate? I mean, if our code clearly says currently that the facilities need to be provided concurrently, but can we require that the district, you know, jump on board with this?
Sorry.
I'm trying to marry it up, too, with the response that's in the memo, which doesn't make it sound like, there's a lot of legal questions here, and I'm not sure I should be asking them in open public session either.
Yep.
And, yeah, this is something that we will discuss with legal, to figure out the right size. And, you know, we're in a collaborative working relationship with the school districts. You know, our goal is to make sure that they are aware of development. When a developer has an idea to develop something, we want the district to be aware of it. When a developer makes application for a development proposal, we want the district to be aware of it. When a development is complete and homes are being built and occupancy is taking place, we want the district to be aware of it. And those are all really important to us, because that, if we're successful in communicating that information, then the districts are going to be successful in planning for providing school capacity for those students. The whole other question is about how that capacity is provided, the necessary financial commitments that are in place, et cetera, which is, which is why we want to revisit this whole section of code and make sure that it meets best practice, make sure that it works for the school district, make sure that it works for the city, because there are many, many stakeholders involved here. And at the end of the day, most importantly, we want to make sure that there is school capacity available when that development comes online.
Yeah, no, absolutely. But yes, revisiting the code would be key, and certainly working with the districts to find amenable language, because we talk about having financial commitments in place, but they're not our financial commitments, right, through the districts, and they do that by way of bonds. And the what-if scenario, what if they don't pass the bond, right? And the houses are already here, and then we're not concurrent. And so, yeah, it's a, it's a long conversation, but I certainly support the mayor's motion and the sentiment behind it, because then we hopefully stay out of these situations where we have, you know, Tesla stems 33 over, Eastlake High School's 333 students over. We stay out of those situations, hopefully.
Okay, next we have, Councilmember Gamblin?
Yes, thank you. Hey, two questions for Mr. Pyle. Number one, you mentioned that this is a legacy and it hasn't really been being watched. On the last five developments of the size that we would intend this to be applied to, has this code been active? And have we gotten input from the school district, just randomly, just say the last five developments? Have we done any kind of confirmation with the school district? And Mike, I guess the question is, has this code, as it's currently written, been followed for these last five developments?
So, the answer to that is, is yes. And there, there's a memo that was provided to you, I think, two weeks ago by email. I'd be happy to forward it back over again, that outlines the process that we do currently take. So, we do engage the school district. We do send not only a notice of application to the school district, but we also send a form for the school district to complete, and the school district is given opportunity to provide feedback on that. We also send CIPA notifications to the school district where they're able to provide feedback. And in that sense, the process is being followed. The, in this case, the one thing that's interesting to point out is the, the hearing examiner decision is really where the city determination of concurrency is made, if you follow the code. And we, we think that that might be something that's better made by the school district as opposed to the hearing examiner. We don't want to be in the position of being the accountant for school capacity in the city. We just have enough to handle already, unless you want to hire five more staff just to keep track of school capacity. We don't really want to be in that position. So, it does behoove us, in this instance, to work with the school district directly to make sure that they're engaged, because they have those numbers, and they're the ones that... to make sure that they're engaged, because they have those numbers and they're the ones that, that keep track of that. So to answer your question, the, the, the code was followed, um, the process is intact. Um, however, there are some definite improvements and enhancements that can be made to this process.
Okay, well, the, if the code was followed, then I assume that we got a, a response back from the district, a positive response back from the district. Um, and that wasn't, that, that, I didn't get that impression on your email that came out that the school did actually respond so that we could tell what the capacities were. So, we may have followed the code to send it out. Was the code followed to get it back and then apply it?
So that's, that's the, the, the form that's sent out, um, is not, and this, this is where I, I say, we're not fully aligned with the, the letter of what the code says. Um, so it's, it's the point of, of decision where the concurrency determination is made is for projects that have a hearing examiner decision, which are of a certain scale, um, it is the hearing examiner who makes that decision.
Well, the, the hearing examiner is, is, again, i- if, who, who is passing the buck to who? Um, I'm not getting, um, getting at anybody's case, but we notified the school district. The school district doesn't get back to us. It goes to the hearing examiner. There's no indication to the hearing examiner whether there's actual capacity or not. How can we expect the hearing examiner to make a finding when there's nothing there, giving him the data that he would need to make that decision?
I, I, point taken, you know, and that, that's one of the reasons why we, we are also interested in improving this.
Okay, well, I would input to, um, Councilmember Trine's input, or, or possibly it was Councilmember Ross, that it would be a complete app, or be an incomplete application without that positive response. And one last thought, I had two questions. Here's the second one. Um, it doesn't seem like school capacities are a big secret. Um, we just went through them quite a bit. We had, um, notifications from all the school districts what their capacities are, what they expect them to be. Um, schools are planned way in advance, um, with bonds going out many years and, and permits out many years and planning out many years. So it wouldn't seem a big surprise or a, a, a very complex undertaking to know exactly what our capacities are. Um, so on the north end of Sumamish where I am, I was looking, and we're at capacity with those elementary schools. So unless there's something that is already past bond and is already in the, in the works for acquisition and, and construction, it would seem pretty clear that, um, we're not going to have a lot of extra capacity there. So my question is, well, why do we have this extra step of reaching out to the school district every time there's a development? Could we not get, uh, an update from the school districts on a regular basis, quarterly or whatever it has to be, um, looking out three, five, 10 years on where they've passed a bond, where they're acquiring the land, and where they have a plan on, on providing more capacity? Um, again, it seems those numbers are very easily acquired, and they don't change very rapidly. So I'm just wondering why we can't do this ourselves rather than, um, reaching out and hoping the school district accommodates?
And I, you know, that's one way of looking at it. Um, it, again, it goes back to staffing. It goes back to, um, what the city's role is. And if this council wants to expand the city's role, that's the council's prerogative. Uh, we can do that. Um, I'm not aware of a jurisdiction that takes on making a, um, a judgment call as to whether there's adequate school capacity when that school district is separate from the city. Um, if the city owned the school district, I'd understand that. But in the case where the, the city does not own the district, I'm just saying I, I, I have not seen that. Um, that's not to say...
Yeah, I'm cool with that, David. I understand. That's a good point. In the absence of a positive response from the school district, for whatever reason, um, I would posit that we would want to seriously then consider an ability for us to do that ourselves if for some reason the school district is not able to or willing to provide that information to us.
Yeah, that's, that's fair. And I would, I would also add to that, that, you know, that this, this be, be more of a, um, criteria for approval. And, you know, a- as we look at our development regs, one of the things that, that I, I'm a big fan of is very clear criteria, um, to understand when something is at a point where it can be approved, or when something's a complete application, as you suggest. Um, and, and, you know, tr- trying to expand that criteria and, and looking at not only cleaning this section of code up, but also looking at other partner amendments that might go along with it to make sure that there is that, that gap stop measure, that, that, that che- that pre-flight checklist, if you will, to make sure that, that this has been looked at, right? And it's, it's a, if there's a list of criteria and you, you're supposed to do one through six, and you have to prove one through six to, to make it to the hearing examiner, and item six is adequate school capacity, well, that's very clear. The way the code is structured right now is, it's, it's not, it's, it's vague as to when this process occurs. And that's one of the things we want to clean up.
You got it. Okay, appreciate that. And based on that statement, I do support, um, the mayor's motion. And David, you mentioned that staff follows, um, interest by council. This is of high interest. Thanks so much.
Thank you, yeah, appreciate it.
Okay, um, Councilmember Stewart, and, and I'm going to apologize to you, David. I did not mean for this to be as long as this is taking, because, Council, I want you to keep in mind it's 20 to 11. Uh, Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, um, thank you. Uh, obviously, school capacity is, is a big concern. Uh, many people have kids. I have, have, uh, kids still in public school here. Uh, I definitely want to see us address this. I want to raise a couple of, of key points though. One thing, Councilmember Gamblin, that you said was, you know, it's many, many years. You would actually be surprised that once land has been acquired, how quickly the school districts can get a school built. So, uh, I think there's a couple of things. One, I think that we might want to work with the school districts and see if we need to use some of our, uh, lobbying at the state level to assist the schools in a couple of things. One, in being able to get their bonds passed with a simple majority. Uh, two, um, being able to plan further ahead. So it's my understanding that the school districts can't actually build schools in advance of the, uh, the needs being there, which is a big reason why we have so many of the, uh, portables, because they can't build something on future needs. So I think we're going to have to look very carefully at the legal, uh, challenges that we may have of saying that there's capacity. How does one define that capacity? Because the school districts cannot build in advance of the need, and that is a state law, as I understand it. So, again, we may, uh, want to assist our school districts in removing some of these barriers. And then obviously, the third barrier is helping them find land and working with them to find sites and to make it easier, uh, and less expensive for them to build schools once they do find land. Uh, I think we need to partner with them and be part of that. I think our community needs that. I think that, uh, if you look at any of our school districts, uh, well, at least Issaquah and, and Lake Washington, for sure, they struggle with that, and they need help from the jurisdictions. Uh, because, you know, even if we say no more in Sumamish, that doesn't change Lake Washington's challenges. Houses are going to be built. Students are going to move into other parts of the district, and they're still going to have these challenges, and they're just going to keep, um, uh, re, uh, allocating where the kids go, right? And we're still going to have overcrowding problems in our schools, even if we don't build more homes here. So, uh, I would, I would argue that we, as, um, as a council, you know, when I first got on the council, we had regular meetings with, uh, the school districts and the entire, uh, school boards. And I, I would say that let's start doing that again so that we can really help the districts, uh, find land, help them acquire that land so that they can, uh, get those schools built. Uh, and it will help our students, um, a- as well as those all over the district. Because again, uh, it's kind of like a balloon here. Uh, if, if other parts of the district get overcrowded, um, and, and we don't do anything here, they may squeeze more students here just because they have to. So just because we don't build more here doesn't mean we're going to stop that capacity problem. And again, I, I, I certainly support the, the idea of this, but I do see a lot of challenges in how exactly do we define what that capacity is? Because I don't think the schools can build a school six years in advance of the, of the development being there. Um, and so we're going to have to really, uh, look at that and, again, see if we need to address some of those laws at the state level in terms of how, how they can get funding and build for that. Uh, so I'd throw that out there. And I see that our city manager has put a question in the chat box. I would, um, remind him, uh, at, that, uh, we should not be having conversations in the chat box, that that's actually a violation, I believe, of our Open Public Meetings Act. So, uh, all of those conversations should happen, uh, on, on live.
Okay.
My mistake. I was just trying to get heard in the box.
Okay.
And ask the question.
Okay.
I'm not asking you guys a question. I'm asking everybody the question.
All right.
Do you think they're okay as long as we keep them and they're part of the public record?
Okay, then we'll make sure that that's part of the public record. Um, also want to make sure that, um, as we're talking about other things that we can help the school district with, there's, you know, perhaps we can go to the county and ask them to allow, you know, schools to be put right outside of the, you know, urban growth line. Um, they're allowing for the developments to go right outside the urban growth line these days. So perhaps the schools should be allowed to do the same, uh, to handle some of that growth. And, um, you know, we could look at, uh, different things for schools, you know? Um, schools don't have to look like schools do these days. So, you know, if they're having a development go in, that's, you know, maybe it's the ground floor of something. So, um, have to look at schools a little bit different. So do we have any other questions? Um, city manager, did you want, did you have a question? Looks like it's answered.
No, I, generally, I was just asking the question how this applies to zoning. But this dialogue is going on, uh, much too long. I can get that
All right, totally.
answered, uh, with David and discuss it with the council on another time.
Excellent. Any other questions? Okay, um, that being said, uh, the motion was on the table. Who was the second? Ken Gamblin? Okay, um, hearing no other discussion then. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Excellent. Okay, guys, we have one last hearing this evening, and it is for public hearing, which, um, and it is for opening the public hearing. It's for ordinance 020, 02020 dash 517, granting, and this is the continuation of an open public hearing, for granting to Comcast Cable Communications LLC the right privilege, authority, and franchise to construct, operate, maintain, reconstruct, repair, and upgrade the cable system upon, over, under, along, across, and through the franchise area for the, a purpose of providing cable services, providing for sever- severability and establishes an effective date. Who's going to speak to this? Is this...
That would be me, Madam Mayor.
All right.
So this is the, your second reading of an ordinance adopting a Comcast franchise. There are two readings required pursuant to RCW 35A47040. You opened the public hearing on October 20th, and this is the second reading. And I would be happy to answer any questions about the franchise that you reviewed on October 20th. And Terry Davis from Comcast is also, I'm assuming, still on the line if you have any questions for him as well.
Okay, Council, do we have any questions for, uh, Lisa or the gentleman from Comcast? Okay, do we have anybody, do we have any public input this evening? Do we have anybody on hold? Do we have any letters?
I do not have any public comment.
Okay, we have no public comment this evening. And we have, I am not seeing any questions in the chat box for this continuance of this hearing. Okay, then I am looking for a motion.
Uh, move to adopt.
Okay, Council Stewart, put your motion. Who was the second? I'm, I think that was
Trine.
Councilmember Trine, thank you. Any discussion?
Mayor, don't forget to close. Don't forget to close the hearing, please.
Thank you, closing the hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Excellent. Okay, Council, it is 10 to 11. We are never going to make it through the rest of our stuff on our agenda. Um, I am going to make a suggestion. Um, we've got a couple of things we must do this evening. Um, so I'd like to hear from the council as a priority list. We're going to keep trying until I hear that you guys are done. So, uh, what is your priority list on these? Um, I know that the, we've got the preliminary budget. We've got the discussion on the, uh, countywide planning policies, the school district letter, and executive session.
Mayor, I have a question, um,
Yep.
in, in trying to help prioritize. I thought that we were going to open the public hearing for the budget this evening. If not, when is that now scheduled for?
Mayor, you were saying, Council, your public hearing doesn't open until November 10th, your first year.
But they are open here this evening to have discussion on the preliminary budget, to answer any questions and to go through, and I think they're looking for some sort of direction this evening, so I want to make sure we hit that. So, yes?
Um, I was going to say the, uh, item number 10 and number 11 are issues of timing that are even more critical, uh, as to, uh, David and his, uh, team getting back, uh, to his next county planning meeting, which the council discussed earlier this evening. Then, um, the opportunity, if the council wants it, to reply back to the Issaquah, Issaquah School District, um, their formal filing of their plan.
Okay.
So, uh, David can probably comment on both of those, but those have a, a very tight timing schedule as well. Thank you.
Okay, so let's take the two, because I shouldn't, I don't think they'll take that long. Let's go in this order. Let's go 10, 11, 9, and, um, executive session if we have, we'll go in that order. And let's see how far we get. Okay, so discussion, so, um...
I think we need to formally amend the agenda, though, to mix the items up.
So, that's what I was going to do right now. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, so I am going to make the motion that we adjust the schedule to do, um, the order of 10, 11, 9, and then executive session, and we will go as, as far as we can this evening.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, sounds like we have, um, two nays. Okay, um, and...
And Madam Mayor, this is the city attorney. I apologize for interrupting, but I am wondering if there was a vote on the motion to adopt the franchise, the Comcast franchise? Did we have a vote on that motion?
We did.
Okay, thank you very much. So sorry to interrupt.
Okay, so, um, let's get going on the change of, of this. So let's go on number 10. And, uh, this is on the discussion, the updated King County, uh, countywide planning policies. And actually, we're going to have to have an extension of the meeting. It's already 5 to 11. So I'm looking for an extension. I don't know how far I guess I'm going to want to go this evening, so...
I'll second that.
To what time? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
I'm a nay. Uh, I think, okay, nays, I'm a nay. Who else was nay?
Richie.
Richie, three?
Stewart.
Yep.
Yep. You just wait. Okay, all right, so who is taking up? This is going to be David Pyle, number 10.
That's me, um, uh, Mayor Moran, members of council. Um, item number 10 on your agenda to... Item number 10 on your agenda tonight is a discussion that follows agenda item number five, which was the presentation by King County. This is an opportunity for you to discuss direction you want to give staff with regard to continuing and engaging in growth target discussions with the Geography Caucus for the small, the cities and towns geography. There's some information for you included in the packet under item number 10. We did mention the low, medium, and high ranges that King County has provided as part of their data distribution to the different caucuses. And just what, what basically is happening is the, King County has, we, I guess, the best way to say this is, we've reached the intersection of where the urban growth capacity study turns into an update of the countywide planning policies. We did express some concern to the county, and I did forward those communications to the council regarding the timing, that the urban growth capacity study has not yet concluded. We don't have a final number from that process, we don't know what the final number will be for Sammash yet, and we did not feel that it was appropriate for us to engage in the growth target setting discussions with the urban, excuse me, with the Geography Caucus groups, if we don't still know what our final land capacity is in the city from the urban growth capacity study. The county responded back and said that that will all be included as part of the discussion, but they wanted to get the countywide planning policy update process started, they wanted the discussion with the Geography Caucuses to begin, and we did receive notification of the first kickoff meeting only five business days before the meeting was actually held. So this all was wrapped up fairly quickly on the part of King County, we did express concern with that. The first meeting, the kickoff meeting, which was held now a week and a half ago, was really just some, an overview for all the parties that are involved, it broke up the groups into smaller groups, and we were able to spend five minutes with our Geography Caucus. There are 19 cities in the Cities and Towns group. As part of that, it was decided within the group that one of the best ways to start the conversation would be for each city to indicate what its attributes were, what its weaknesses were, what its challenges were, and in doing so, King County created a survey to help start the conversation. The next meeting has been scheduled by King County for Tuesday, November 10th, from 10 to 12. That is why we wanted to bring this back for the council for feedback. The survey that was provided by King County, that the 19 cities are asked to fill out, is included as exhibit one to agenda item number 10. The primary component of that survey is in response to how the city, the cities and towns in the group see themselves fitting into the, I'm scrolling down to it at this moment, so bear with me, the vision 2050 definition of cities and towns. So there are a few questions, we can walk through that if you'd like. Really, this is your discussion, I just wanted to give you a primer on it, happy to answer any questions, and I'm here to assist you in any way possible and to take whatever direction you have back to the regional caucus groups.
Okay, it looks like we have a question right off the bat, Councilmember Gambler.
Yep. Thank you, David, for that input. So I looked through the questionnaire, and it seems in the questionnaire, there's an automatic given assumption that Sammash will take X amount of growth. And I guess I have two questions. Number one is, is this considered a policy decision for the city based on a council decision on what we want to do? And maybe I can get your answer to that first.
From my perspective, this is 100% council decision.
So in other words, council decides on what we want either as a target and for rationales for that, we then give instruction to staff, yourself, or whoever's going to be going to the actual meetings, to go ahead and advocate that position for the city?
That is my understanding, that I, I as a staff person who attend the caucus meeting, am in the position of representing the city's interests and presenting what our formal, I guess, statement is on our approach to growth targets.
Okay. All right, well, I guess we'll get into discussion then, is this the meeting tonight to have that discussion and come to a specific agreement and policy by vote on what we want to be the city's policy and instruct staff to present to the caucus?
So I believe this to be an iterative process, so this is the starting point. You, I'd be happy to re-forward the communication that we had with King County, we expressed several concerns to King County, primarily about the speed by which the process was moving from the urban growth capacity study into the growth target setting phase, and we did not have adequate time to discuss our capacity with our council, to talk about our, our challenges with regard to infrastructure, to talk about the cost of infrastructure in providing new units. These are all things that we will be able to raise as part of the caucus discussions. Another factor is how we've performed in the past with regard to growth. You know, one, one interesting point here that I have to bring up is, you know, being put in a Cities and Towns category as part of Mission 2050, which is not a city staff doing, it's not a city doing, we were assigned to that group based on attributes, puts us in, if you look at the relative statistics in the table that's provided in the agenda bill, one of the things that you'll notice is Sammash's size in comparison to the other jurisdictions that are included in the Cities and Towns group. And one of the methods, and this is explained in the agenda bill, one of the methods by which King County is setting the high, medium, and low initial potential targets for discussion, these are sort of goalposts that they're initially putting up as a way to talk about how to divide this up, is that if you look at Sammash's relative size, if you were to use that as a, as a benchmark, then Sammash therefore would be assigned a higher growth target, because we're much bigger, right? And I'm just simply saying this as a point of comparison amongst the cohort. So if you look at the other cities, another one, for example, is, is past performance, and whether or not we're able to actually build units, and that could work against us. Another one is the fact that the city only has based on our initial number, and we believe the initial number to be, to be high because we haven't taken into account the market factor yet, which is part of the urban growth capacity study. But the, the fact is, is that we have 12% of the capacity in, in the cohort, but I think we have 33% of the total land area, meaning that Sammash accounts for 33% of the total land mass, not available land, which is, which is simple, simple geometry. But we only have 12% of the, of the capacity from the initial analysis. So if you divided it that way, that would get us our low number, we would take 12% of the growth within, for the caucus. So this was simply a relational statistical analysis that King County did, in looking at how the cities stack up. But it's important to note that because we are bigger, we are somewhat, and I'm just trying to call this out, put at a little bit of a disadvantage in arguing our case. So I make sure we're aware of that, and it is a challenge that we will have with the group.
Yeah, well, you know, again, that, it's a, it's a really speechless argument when you, you know, I could have a funnel that has a five-foot wide opening at the top, which is the size of the city, but it's the bottom size of the funnel that matters. So whether we can actually have the, the land available to build the housing on, it is a point that should be dwarfed by the fact that we have a very tiny bottom to our funnel. We're not on a highway, we don't have light rail, our transit service is mediocre at very best and not going to get any better. Our arguments to not have growth here are so overwhelming that when I see this, this rationalization that we should be taking growth because we have more area, when they're not even looking at buildable area, is kind of laughable. And my concern is, how do we make the point strongly enough as a council? And, and I would, I would put forward here that we just had an election last year, and the major point was traffic and infrastructure and the lack thereof, and it was an overwhelming result on what the public wants. So if we look at the elected council as a reflection as to what the residents of Sammash want, it's very, very clear on what the residents are looking for, and we're supposed to provide that for them. So my concern is, I see these numbers, and it just, my hair stands on end, and I'm wondering how do we most effectively, as a council, vote to express what we want as a policy, and then how do we most make sure that that is expressed through our representation at the caucus?
Okay. Are you done? Councilmember Gambler?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mayor, yes, I'm finished, quite.
Okay. Next, I've got Councilmember Trane.
Wow, thanks, Mayor. Let's see if I can be clear, concise here, because it's getting late, but it's, David, we were looking for a number that is as low as possible, in my opinion. Some of the reasons that Mr. Councilmember Gambler spoke would be one of those. I'd say going into the caucus, if you and your staff, Dave, can bring up some of those other factors to this particular group of people, that would be wonderful. I think the other thing is to look at, is if there's a way to talk with the, looking at Black Diamond, Covington, maybe Duval, Enham Claw. I don't know how North Bend exactly is feeling, because I think their mayor's going to have a, you're going to have a little challenge with North Bend, but I would go to those, probably the top three or four cities, and just pretty much ask them how much they really want to grow, and are they willing to take some of our numbers? And then the last one would be, David, Mr. Pyle, is that, and if the council would agree about this, is that the 2050 vision clearly states where the services are available, that, that that's where the, the majority of the developments go. And I just look at the expenditure on the 520, and how much money was spent there by taxpayers to build that infrastructure, that our fellow cities of Yarrow Point, well, the Point Cities, we'll just call them the Point Cities, are looking at, you know, 5170 and 2, and so asking those cities as well in the caucus if they would look at building some kind of mixed use near the 520 bridge deck, or looking at how, how they could help take some of the growth in their area where the services are already there. So that would be the strategy that I would take initially into the caucus, if I was walking in the door. So, thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, I believe that piece of infrastructure had a $5.4 billion price tag attached to it, if I'm right.
That's the 520, right?
That's correct.
Yeah. And I understand, hey, if I lived at Yarrow Point, and you put that big highway through, I'd have a problem, you know, but I don't live there, so I live in Sammash, and I love it.
Okay, so next I have got Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, so David, just on the timeline, I know your next meeting is coming up next week, but there will be additional meetings, as I understand it. Again, this is the very beginning of a rather lengthy negotiation process, isn't that correct?
So that's a great question, and in, in the chain of Q and A that I forwarded to the council with King, from King County, it's, one of the questions we had is how many meetings do they anticipate total this taking? And they said between three and five meetings, well, this would be the second meeting. So I asked, you know, what if additional meetings are required, because the group cannot reach a consensus, and they said that there will be meetings added as needed. So, you know, my, my initial sense from the group was, nobody was stepping up in the first five-minute discussion that we had as a caucus, said, hey, you know, we're here to take growth. The sense was I got is that no one there really wanted growth. So I'm going to, I'm going to definitely learn more on that and report back to the council on that. I appreciate all the comments here, but they're, they're, this is, as you heard pre, as you heard with item number five tonight, they're anticipating wrapping this up in sometime in the end of December, possibly into January, so that's a fairly fast process. And, you know, that is something that we stated points of concern on to King County, you know, we, we received notification for the first meeting, five days before the meeting, five business days before the meeting. It didn't really give us time to dig into the information they sent over to prepare, to talk to the council in a formal setting. So here we are.
I know how that feels, only having a couple of days to prepare before you have to talk about it in a public meeting, David, totally get that. No, I'm sorry, I don't mean to cut you off, I, I hear you. I would say that one of the things I can take back to the GNPC is to request more time and more meetings if we need to, and so I'm happy to do that, especially if, you know, things are moving that quickly and you're not getting the data in a timely fashion. A couple other questions, because again, this agenda item got added pretty late, and I'll be honest, I didn't have a chance to really absorb all of the information. It looks like we do have a draft of the capacity numbers in here, is that correct? And the 3288?
Yes, that's correct.
And have we gotten, is there like a complete report, or we just got that number?
Just the number. And the reason for that is that there's a whole other step in the urban growth capacity study that hasn't been completed yet, and that is the market factor. And that is another item we're going to want council feedback on, is how should we set the market factor for Sammash?
Makes sense.
We have not received the guidance on that yet, so hence our comment, and I'm not meaning to throw King County under the bus on this, I, you know, they've, they've done a lot of work on this, and in each separate group, the, where the two groups come together, the UGCS and the CPPs, that is where I see the tension, because they're trying to launch the CPP program, yet the UGCS program is not done winding down, and we have not had time to reflect on the data, to discuss what that means for Sammash- before entering into the CPP process. So that is what I commented on to King County, is that, hey, this, you know, you're, you're starting the CPP too early. We need more time with the UGCS before we can even go into that process.
Well, there is other stuff we have to go through with the CPPs in addition to this. So we'll probably take some time on that as well. And I'll make sure to report back after, I always report back after all of the meetings. But I'll provide the detailed information, because there are other topics that we'll have to go through. There are amendments to things that aren't specific to numbers, right? So this is just a part of the CPP process. It, it does look like, you know, we can probably get that number down once we apply that market factor. And if you look at the low-end number here, again, I think that these three numbers are provided just as examples for, for cities to consider. So I don't think we need to get our, our hair standing up just yet, because, again, I think King County is moving as quickly as they can and trying to provide some of these sort of relative numbers. And if I, if I understand the way that this has happened in the past, we will go into this with a negotiation. We have been put into, you know, I know, David, you're concerned, because we're the largest city in the cities and towns, but being in the cities and towns is a way better place to be than in any of the other categorizations. So I, I would argue that we are, we should be very happy to be in the cities and towns categorization. One other question is, have these numbers been adjusted? It's my understanding that the PSRC just passed an amendment, which actually lowers the number of housing units that will be required by the cities and towns, because they increased how much is going to go into Snohomish County. Have these numbers been adjusted for that yet?
Yes. So this reflects the current numbers in Vision 2050.
Okay, with the amendment that just passed?
My understanding is that that's correct.
Okay, because I know it did lower the number by, I forget, a couple thousand off of the the cities and towns as well. So I, I would just, I would just say, I think, you know, it's no secret that we want to be targeting the lower end. I would say, you know, we definitely want to get the data back, but I don't think anybody needs to panic just yet. And I, I don't think we need to be getting angry with the folks at King County. They work very much in, in terms of trying to take in, in the input and the feedback from people, and trying to meet everyone's needs. So they are not ignoring anybody. They're not trying to, to do anything to anybody. They're really trying to, to meet everyone's needs. So I don't think we need to worry too much. And I think that it's no secret that Sammamish is always asking for less, and, and the lowest number that we, that we can get. So I think we just continue to look at that and, and look at, I, I would say that my, my interest in the meetings that you have with the caucus is to understand of these, you know, how they're looking at this, is coming up with a rational set of criteria. And I know, David, you are kind of a criteria guy, which is great. You know, the first one is looking at it just from a landmass. The second one is looking at it from a ratio of past housing targets. And then the third one is looking at some other statistics. So in my mind, the, probably the right way to go is to come up with, what is the right set of criteria we should be using to determine where that growth should go? And looking at Vision 2050 is certainly a good, a good place to look, because where you have transit, where you have services, is one. I think we need to be careful, because if our argument is only that we don't have the infrastructure, and therefore we can't take the growth, I, I think that a lot of people suffer from not having the infrastructure currently in place. And I don't think the fact that we haven't built our infrastructure will be viewed as a legitimate rationale for not giving us more growth. I think we need to be a little bit more scientific and thorough about it, because some of our lack of infrastructure is because we haven't built it. And so I would just caution that, that I don't know that that will play well with the other cities. And as we look for consensus, we should be looking at it, I think, more in the way that Councilmember Ritchie looked at it, which is, what are some of the other things we can do? How can we look at this? How can we look at it as a city that's coming to the table to try to help solve this problem for ourselves, as well as the region, and not just for ourselves? Because if we do it that way, it's going to be a much, I think, more difficult conversation for you to have. So I would say that the best thing we could do for you is to provide you with some more information, or maybe you can provide us with information about what are some of those descriptive statistics, or what are some of the other factors that we should take to the table that would be sort of more scientific in terms of determining the right number of housing units, given the total number of housing units that need to be accounted for across the cities and towns category. Does that make sense?
Yes, one, one attribute right away, you know, one, one method here is, if, if you read through the, the flow of how we get to the cities and towns category and the number of units, there's a step in there where we convert from people to units. And that, that is based on a factor that King County chose. It's a, a per household population. There's a pretty wide spread in the cities and towns category. Sammamish is on the very high end. So one, one, one thing that could happen here is we could reconvert back to people, and we could talk about dividing it up in terms of people. Then we could look at real per household census, per household population units, and divide back down to units. The, the, the point here is that if you have two people per household versus three people per household, it makes a significant impact on the number of units.
It does. I guess one of the things that strikes me about that, though, is we've gotten a lot of feedback from the community at looking at our housing balance. And so that assumes that we're only going to continue to build large, single-family homes, which may or may not be the right thing for our city. I don't think we've done that analysis ourselves yet, in terms of what do the people who currently live here need? Where are we, you know, as we start to get older, and I say we, because I'm in that category, is there a place for, you know, people to move as they get older, as they start to have empty nests? Is there a place for our kids as they become adults to move? What is, what are the needs of the, the residents that currently live here in terms of housing needs and housing balance? So I, I think that is an interesting way to look at it, but I don't know that that necessarily addresses the needs that we have currently in our city. And certainly from an environmental standpoint, building more large, single-family homes isn't a good thing for the environment, if that's all we're going to build. So it, it's, it's a factor, but I don't know that it should be the only factor we look at.
Okay, so, Council, I want to remind everybody, we, we are coming down to 11:25. So I want to make sure we stay on target, and we are down to Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. First, Sammamish has not always taken the lowest number. That is a misnomer and something I think that was stated, but was not true. And so I think that's probably why some of these numbers do make our, you know, hair stand on end. And I do think it is reason enough for us to be fully engaged in this as a council, and giving clear and concise direction to our staff members who are attending of what our sentiment collectively as a council is. I'm hoping at some point, after everybody has a chance to speak, we'll get to a motion where we can give that succinct message to staff to take forward. But, you know, even the, the low number is still not low when you look at our city. It's not. I mean, you can raise your eyebrows, but I, you know, I'm, I'd like the low of the low. We do not have the available assets that some of these other cities have. We do not have direct freeway access. We barely have any transit service, and we're not getting light rail, right? Somebody still has to get in their car at this juncture to get to light rail. Now, maybe that changes in the future, but all cities are not created equally. And unfortunately, and even in, when you put us in the bucket for, you know, the cities and towns, they're still not created equally. And, you know, you can say that we haven't built some of our infrastructure, but I think that was a product of a past concurrency methodology that allowed us to grow without doing it, because you wouldn't build a road when your concurrency methodology didn't require you to build anything. So we got ourselves into this mess with some poor policy, which we're trying to remedy. But I think when we give, you know, our direction to David and whoever else at the city is going to represent us, yeah, I, I think that the, the direction is, well, we definitively want to look in that low category. I don't even want to look at the medium or the high. No way, no way. We have got to have some breathing room to catch up. And incidentally, these numbers are not ceilings. They are floors, right? I mean, if we went in and said, we want zero, it doesn't mean we're not going to grow. It just means there's no target. Doesn't mean you can't, you know, organically build, you know, buildings. What if our number was 500? We could build 3,000 if we wanted to. It's just, that, that number is a floor. It is a minimum. And so if you look at some of those other municipalities that are in our bucket, like Maple Valley, for example, they look way over, right? Because there isn't like a ceiling to these numbers. There's just a floor. So at any rate, I, I would, my preference would be that we look in that low bucket, and we stay there, because we just cannot continue to go like this. But, like I said, doesn't mean you can't build more if you, if you can put in the infrastructure. But if you can't do it, I, I'm advocating for that low category.
Okay, then I actually have a comment. David Pyle, I have a question. One of the things in reading this is something that I've been bringing up since I ran for office, and, and something that I worked on when I was on the Water and Sewer District, and that is that the, it's not just that we're not putting in the, the things that we need, it's that the county's also not putting in what we need. So the infrastructure, for example, the northern diversion. I'm not seeing that mentioned here as, hey, we're missing it. So we don't have this, the northern diversion being put in. It was supposed to be finished by 2025, and it's not even started. So I don't see how, I mean, it's not even in the budget. So, you know, I'm looking at, how can they expect us to take these numbers on a project that they don't even have funded, much less started, and, and anything else in the next 20 years? I don't, I'm just not seeing that when, when they're giving us these numbers. So I think that's something else you probably need to, when we're talking infrastructure, or at least when I'm talking infrastructure, I don't, just talking roads, I'm talking all infrastructure, even the stuff you can't see. And so, but I didn't see that in this report.
Yeah, so this, this agenda bill only reflects the data that's given to us by King County.
Well, King County should know they didn't give us the infrastructure.
As, as part of the urban growth capacity study, there is an infrastructure gap component in that. We did work closely with the Sammamish Plateau, Water and Sewer District, and the Northeast District. Sammamish Plateau did raise that as, as a concern, and they, they, they really, they didn't raise that as a big enough of a concern to indicate that there would be a capacity issue in the planning horizon of 20 years. So there, there are certain factors that you have to consider when you're considering whether something, or whether you're determining whether something is a, an insurmountable gap, or whether it is something that is, is going to be dealt with through planning in the longer term. And the, we left that up to the district. We're, we're not as, as city staff in the position to tell the district whether or not that presents a capacity issue going forward or not.
That surprises me. So can, can I ask when you talked to them? Because I know, oops. That surprises me, because that, was that before they took the money out of the budget last year and took away the northern diversion? Or was that, when did you talk to him?
That would have been earlier this year, we talked to him.
Okay, so was it before they took the money out of the budget and, and moved it, or do you know?
I'm not sure when it, I'm not sure about the whole budget removal thing. I haven't been in that conversation.
Okay. Okay, so next up is Councilmember Ritchie.
Thank you. My fellow councilmembers, I'm hearing a lot of people giving their personal opinions about stuff. And I think in the interest of time, we should probably try to give David some direction, some specific direction. And from what I've heard, I haven't heard anybody, and myself included, say anything other than to ask David to try to get the lowest possible number for the city of Sammamish at the meeting, or at the caucuses, and any of the meetings coming up for our growth management allocation. So in my opinion, that is about as much information as we can possibly give him that's going to be useful. The question I have is, kind of overarchingly, what is the, do you need direction from us in the, in the form of a motion, or do you need direction from us in terms of us kind of giving you our individual opinions? What is going to be the most effective thing? Or have you heard enough from us thus far, David?
I would say that direction in the form of emotion is always appreciated. However, I've heard from each council member, I don't know that I've heard from all of you. I don't think I've heard from Councilmember Ross yet on this.
I appreciate that.
My, 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 my understanding so far is that we, we, we want the right growth target for our condition. We want the right, not right type of units. We don't just want big, single-family homes all the time. We want a variety of unit types going forward. We want our location and our setting with regard to access to transportation infrastructure to really be highlighted. We want our, our situation with regard to other infrastructure elements, whether it be sewer, stormwater capacities, systems, to, to be highlighted. The sensitivity of our natural resources to be highlighted. We want the, the position of other cities to be brought up with regard to their accessibility to state, state-funded, county-funded infrastructure that we all pay for, where we don't have that, but they do. And that should be considered. We want, I'm trying to think of what else I've heard. So that, those are the things I've heard. Tell me what I'm missing, because I'm, I'm keeping a, a rolling tally here.
David, if you'll mind me saying, and I, I don't think you missed anything that I've heard. I mean, I'm, I'm kind of tracking it as I'm going. But I, I mean, I guess the overarching thing I keep going back to is, and we can put it in the form of a motion, and that's fine. If that's what's needed, I'll, I'll make a motion here when I'm done. But I guess more, more to the point of just trying to figure out what, we want to give you the tools so that you can negotiate, not from a hard position, inasmuch as that may not be the most advantageous for us over the course of the, the entire vision. That's my personal opinion. I don't, in my personal opinion, for whatever it's worth, as a council member, as a citizen, and living in the city for a number of years, I would rather see, because of our geographic limitations, because of some of the environmental sensitivities, because of our lack of transit, there's a variety of reasons why, I, I think, multiple school districts, name it, right? There are several reasons why I would think more to Councilmember Gamble's point about the bottom of a funnel being more important than the top of a funnel. I think that's a pretty interesting perspective, or, you know, analogy. But I, I think that if you can go into this with a certain amount of we would like the least, I think, from what you said, you're going to find a lot of other municipalities in that cities and towns group that are going to feel the same way. So my question overarchingly to you is, we can give you a position, but what does that position afford you in terms of, are we tying your hands? You are our, our advocate, our, our representative at these caucuses, having, you know, participated in a couple similar situations. I don't know that it does you any good to have a, a firm position, then again, a may, because then you're like, look, this is what my city council told me to do. You know, there's nothing I can do. This is where I am. It's not up to me. It's up to the council, and I, I can't do more. do more than they are telling me to do. I totally respect that and maybe that's where we need to go. But my, my big concern at the end of the day here is, are we putting ourselves in a position by being kind of overly anti-development because of our specific limitations, that what does that do to us in terms of the other jurisdictions? It's a caucus. There'll be some allocations given to everybody. What does that do? Are we going to be the bad guy? And are they going to just hammer us with a bunch that essentially we can't deal with? I don't know what that looks like in terms of the dynamic in the room, David. And I guess I'm, I'm asking a difficult question. I don't know that there's an answer, but, and I'm, I'm not seeking an answer. I'm just trying to figure out the, the dynamic in the room when these caucuses happen. What does that look like? And lastly, then I'll stop talking, is what does the, the allocation of X number of, of units in San Amish that the, the city, the council deems being just too many? We just can't deal, even if it's one and we should be zero, or if it's 5,000, we should be 1,500, whatever the number is, if it is X number beyond what we think is tolerable, or, or even manageable for us as a city, what ramifications does that have on us as a city? What are the, do we, is there an appeal? Is there anything we can do at that point? And if there isn't, I think we should figure out how we're going into this without knowing the rules of the road a little bit. So I don't know if that's an answerable question or not, but I'm hoping you can shed some light on it.
And that, that you, the, the last part of that is where you summarize sort of where my concern is, is that we're basically going into this not knowing the rules of the road and we're learning as we go. Um, you know, whereas if we'd had more time to ramp up the CPP process, after concluding the, the UGCS process, we would have time to get set on that, to have these conversations in an uncompressed environment. Um, and that's, that's where my frustration is in this whole thing, um, is that we're put in this compressed environment where we have to, to figure out a path forward and I have to understand what your direction is as a council. Um, you know, I, I also don't see it as so much as being, you know, anti-growth or negative on growth or development. I, I see it as having some very serious founded concerns in, in, with regard to our adequacy of our infrastructure that may not be, um, fixable in the next 20 years. And it would be, um, irresponsible of us to take on a growth target that exceeds our ability to provide infrastructure for those new units being brought to the city. Um, and I think that, that as we go through our comp plan process, and as we look at how to fix infrastructure going forward, eventually, you know, maybe in the next round of the, the countywide planning policy updates, you know, eight, eight or so years from now, when this happens again, maybe we'll have a better handle on that. And maybe we'll be able to, to take a different approach to growth. Uh, but right now, we're, we're being responsible.
I, David, I agree with 100%. I don't think it's anti-development. I'm concerned about how that looks to others and not necessarily, that to me matters because of the possible ramifications of not knowing the rules. That's the, to me, that's the elephant in the room is there are some things that we don't know. And in as much as, and if I can add one more piece here, just then I'll stop, is that I think that the, the, what we could do is talk about the King County, the, the, essentially the lack of being able to have a competitive transit, you know, that the monopoly that King County Metro has on being able to have transit within specifically San Amish and to have it be competitive. I mean, to me, that's a pretty, that's a big deal. One of the things we deal with this year, not being able to get people off the plateau in an efficient way, at least we used to, but I'm, hopefully it'll go back to that again soon. So, you know, in terms of rush hour traffic, there are some things we could talk about that maybe we could ally with other cities to help them to kind of work as a team. I don't know. But then I'll just add my last thing. I swear to God, then I'll be done. I'd like to make a motion that we direct our Representative David Pyle to, um, go to the caucuses and seek the lowest possible growth rate for the City of San Amish.
Well, I still have seconded the chat box.
Maybe we can do it around a motion. That's all I'm trying to do.
Motion's there. It's seconded. People can still comment, right?
Well, yes, but now it's around that motion. So let's hope that's what they want to say. Okay. So Councilmember Gamble.
Yeah. So just a couple real quick things. Um, number one, the, the reason we're at, where we're at now is, is, is in my opinion, poor planning and decision making in the past. And, you know, I don't want to come across as upset or angry, but I saw evidence that the public was informed in the past that we, uh, we were seeking low, the lowest numbers we could. And then I saw documentation that shows that we actually did request high numbers in the past. So there's good reason, there's very good reason to look at this and be very concerned and to push as hard as we possibly can to make sure we have the numbers. Um, so having said that, I'd like to offer an amendment to this motion that the instructions from the, um, council is to request zero number of new housing units here, um, that, um, whoever our advocate happens to be there, request zero number of units. I, I think we can provide, um, reams and reams of data and information showing why we should not be compelled to put more units up on the plateau. If, if we can find a way to put units up here and make it work and we can build the infrastructure, great, let's talk about putting more units up here. But until we can establish that and until we can prove that we can put more housing units up here without causing a big, huge disaster, then we should not be compelled to put them up here. If we request any number above zero, what we're basically saying is, we know we're going to be able to fix our infrastructure issues and so we're willing to take that growth. I haven't seen anything to indicate that we are in that position to say we can fix those things. And so as a responsibility to the residents and as the residents have expressed very strongly that they don't want that development until infrastructure can be improved, um, we have a responsibility to request the lowest possible number, which would be zero. So I put an amendment on here that the number that we go into requesting this is amended, is zero.
I'll second that motion that the lowest number possible is zero.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor and a second, that the lowest number be zero. And that is also with providing information. Um, I'm assuming you're meaning, um, any and all, and that would be with information from the last years of, um, providing information of, of numbers. I, I'm assuming you're meaning numbers of units taken over. Is that what you're talking about?
That's correct. Yeah. We have a, a, a lot of data that shows we've taken more than we needed to. We requested more than we needed to. And then information showing that we have, um, problems taking any more beyond that.
Okay. Um, so that is the motion that is on the floor. Uh, did you want to speak anymore to that motion? Okay. Comments are?
For the amendment, no.
Okay. Any, any questions on the amendment?
I have a comment.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Stewart.
So I think that, uh, zero is, uh, an unrealistic number. This is for a 24-year period that we're talking about, um, these growth numbers. Uh, I think that it is unreasonable. I think that it is not, uh, it's not even just that it's not going to be viewed well. That is, that is not how you participate in a region. Um, if, if we really believe that, then we better go to the table with something to say, here's how we're going to help all of the other jurisdictions, uh, deal with the growth that we're not taking. I think it's also really challenging to go to anybody, uh, especially another group of staff and then elected officials and say, we can't fix any of our infrastructure problems when we in fact haven't tried. So we don't have a TMP, we don't have a tip, uh, we are not trying to fix our infrastructure. And that makes that a really, uh, difficult argument. I am perfectly willing to argue that we want to take the lowest number possible, but there is data in, in our, uh, I'm sorry, capacity, our land capacity report that says we can take more than zero. So I think that zero is a, is not an argument, uh, and that puts David in a very difficult position to try to go in and argue for zero. Um, I would also add that these numbers are not necessarily floors. Uh, there is some work being done in these, uh, countywide planning processes to try to define what these numbers are, uh, because we don't want areas taking too much growth either, right? We want to keep them in a range because we are looking at things like, uh, the environment and social justice, uh, and environmental justice as well. So, uh, the, to say that these numbers are, uh, a floor is not necessarily accurate, uh, because there are areas that actually want to take more growth than, than, uh, is really reasonable, which would cause more problems. And, and so these growth numbers actually restrict some of those areas who want to take more, uh, which is why Snohomish County asked for, uh, the amendment to the, the Vision 2050 so that they had a larger, uh, number to, to allocate.
Okay. Uh, oops. Okay. Next, before we do that, I want to mention, um, let's try to stay away from the TMP and the TIP because the TMP, number one, it was inadequate and it was, uh, not finished. So that was why that wasn't done. And the TIP, if I remember correctly, there was a reason legally we did not do that. So let's stay away from those sorts of comments. Uh, next up is Councilmember Ross.
Yeah. I wanted to add some additional points on infrastructure. We are likely experiencing a scenario where our infrastructure is awfully behind development. And we were to accept additional numbers, and the question I asked earlier, that echo is terrible.
Oh, that's me. Sorry.
The question I asked, okay, the question I asked earlier was, what if we find out that we're evaluating our infrastructure compared to land use and zoning today, which may be different tomorrow, it's possible. How do you adjust for that? Do you claw back and give, reallocate, give us a credit and reallocate to our other 18 cities and towns? The answer is no, it's going forward. So going forward, if we find that we over allocated in this round, the only way we can adjust is either anywhere from zero to something. We cannot get a, a credit and reallocate in the current allocation. So we may put ourselves further behind our infrastructure. So with that risk, and, you know, most cities have the capacity going forward and it's cost prohibitive to, for us, we intuitively know it's cost prohibitive. Um, cut into lakefront properties, cut into golf courses. It's not practical or, um, cost, um, the cost is prohibitive. I just use that word again. It's just astronomical. So I'm very concerned that we get ourselves further behind development on the infrastructure and have no mechanism going forward to recover that. And we can't, so going down to zero or going to a pause point is a better way to describe it. We likely, San Amish have to pause and work with the allocation we currently have and not increase that problem and not have a mechanism going forward to credit it back. So I'm very concerned. So I think, uh, Councilmember Gamble's, um, point is pointing up to zero is not a, a crazy notion. Uh, it, it sounds crazy from a, a practice standpoint when, uh, for, so it's a, uh, Councilmember Stewart's comments, but when you really peel back the onion in San Amish, we are at the point where we have reached capacity. We're, our, we may have already exceeded, likely have, and we can't make it worse. We don't have any further runway to recover and take smaller increments in the future, get us back to what the, uh, city, uh, land use and zoning represents. So I, I, I really am concerned about taking on, uh, uh, any more numbers in this round. And so I think there is arguments to pause for San Amish.
I ask.
Significantly reduce it.
I have a clarifying point, um, to the, the amendment, which is, uh, I, I want to understand, so we, we have about 1,600 units left in our last, uh, growth target that was set with the 2015 comp plan. And am I, am I hearing out of this that what, what we would be advocating for is zero new units added on to that? And that we would simply just roll that 1,600 units over into this next round and, and keep that and not add on to that? Or are we, are we saying that we want to go from 1,600 units left in our last allocation to zero units? And I, I'm, I'm just trying to be clear about this because the way I've heard it, I've heard it both ways here in this conversation and I want to really understand what, what you're saying.
I'll speak to that. If, um, I, I, I wasn't aware that we could, that we could request a retroactive adjustment in the last, um, assignment of, of units. Is, is that what you're suggesting? That cities can come in and retroactively ask to reduce that? And if that's not the case, then what's the question?
It's, it's, what, what they're doing is they're, they're updating the growth targets for a whole new planning horizon. So it's a whole new growth target that's being put in there. Um, and it's, it's not like there's, there's a new target that's being added plus the old target. The new target that's being put in there completely replaces the old target. So, so what, what, what I'm saying is, is that you, you could advocate because now we're in the cities and towns category because the, the breakup of the geographies is different than what it was in the past, uh, because the, the considerations are different than what they were in the past. So it, it, the question is, is really, what is the target that we want going forward? Um, not, not so much about what, how we performed in the past and how many units were left. We're really trying to start anew based on what we know and that is what this target is.
Uh, uh, again, David, I, I'm unclear on your current, my amendment is that you go in and ask in the current cycle that we have zero new housing units added to, um, our quota. I, I don't believe we can go in and request that they retroactively reduce it from our old quota. So the old quota is set. There, if, if, if a city doesn't reach, are you saying that if a city has not achieved their quota in the last term, then that disappears and the other one now takes precedent over that?
So re- remember that, uh, that a, a growth target is not like a debit card, so to speak, you know, you don't have a certain amount of credit and then you, you, you run out of money, um, in terms of the units. And that's, that's analogy I can come up with, so I apologize if it wasn't very good. Um, but the, the, the point here is that, um, we're, we're going through the process of first updating the countywide planning policies for new growth targets for all the cities in the county. Then the next step is we will be updating our comp plan to reflect that target. Um, so the old targets go away incrementally at each step. The first step where the old target goes away is the countywide planning policy is updated. The second step where the old target goes away is the new comp plan that's updated. Um, and at that point in time, the old target is, is, is extinguished and there's a new target that's set in place. So what, what I am saying is that you're, you're not asking them to retroactively adjust the old target. There simply is just a new target that's put in place that supersedes the old target.
Well, based on your argument then, um, since we've already been having stormwater failures and we have, um, traffic failures, our schools are already full, um, based on the, the question and the way that you're asking the question, um, I, I would say we, we shouldn't be building more here until we have solved some of these problems. It, it's not like these are gonna... It's not like these are going to be solved tomorrow, and that each additional housing unit adding its additional sewage use and school, adding to the school population and adding to the traffic and dumping more stormwater because it's creating more impervious surfaces. Each additional housing unit is making our failures even worse. Based on that, we should not be building more housing units until we have figured out how to solve these multiple problems. And it's not just like there's one single problem we can solve. Each house we add adds incrementally to each of these number of buckets. We have four or five failure buckets here. So each one adds to that. So my question is, are you okay, Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, it's just late.
You look like you have a medical emergency.
It's 11:58, my friend.
Okay, I'm aware of the time. I'm speaking if it's okay with you.
I didn't say a word. I didn't say anything.
Thank you, I appreciate it. So based on that, if you want to get into what we should ask for, we should ask for no more than we have right now. I don't think that's possible, but if you can do that, that's great. I'm all for that. And that would make my amendment.
Okay, council, it's 11:58, and we're going to have to extend.
Yeah, I think I'm next anyway in the queue, so I'm happy to extend. So I move to extend to 1:00 AM. God help us if we actually go that long.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Nay.
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 Mayor, was that a four or three?
I'm afraid so.
I only heard three and three. Was there four on the ayes?
Yeah, but they're sleeping. Sorry.
Well, if anybody didn't vote in the same, then we're still rolling here, so.
I guess we're still rolling. All right.
Well, no, if it was three, three, then it would fail. So did we get a four or three?
If someone abstains, I believe it goes as an affirmative vote, which means we are still going, and we are moving till midnight and burning literally the midnight oil right now, because it is midnight. Let's go. So first of all, I do support Councilmember Gamblin's amendment on going for zero, but a caveat that knowing that it's probably fairly unrealistic. So I think if, as long as the council is aware that that's probably not the reality of our future, and that, you know, maybe he's advocating for zero upfront, and then maybe David reports back to us before they go back to their next meeting, because we may need to powwow again based on feedback he's received. But I'm not going to go and repeat what Councilmember Gamblin has already stated, which is, you know, we have some problems here to resolve. And I think one important nuance to recognize is that we're not talking about taking zero to 2044. This is an eight-year planning horizon. So we're saying, we're not taking a target. You're not going to force us to build X number of houses, you know, through our comp plan in the next eight years. What we're saying is, we're going to try and figure out our, you know, our own house here, get it in order, and then if we do, we can build, right? It doesn't mean, taking a zero target does not mean not building any houses. It just means you don't have a target. Again, those numbers are floors, they are not ceilings. So if we say zero, it doesn't mean we can't build if we can't figure stuff out. But I think it's really disingenuous to say we're not trying to fix our own problems, because yes, we are. And step one was putting a concurrency methodology in place that recognized we had some problems that we need to fix. And we're in the middle of doing Issaquah Falls City Road right now, which is five-lating a street. So we are doing things, and we are actively spending money to fix some of these problems. But I think part of David's job, when he goes there, is to kind of tell our story, right? Our story is unconvoluted, even though we're only 20 years old here. And that is, well, 21, I guess now, that, you know, we have some bad policy in place, and the council has rectified that bad policy to get us charted on a course that is conducive for accepting growth in the future. So I do support Councilmember Gamblin's motion, but I think the reality of getting zero is probably unlikely I will concede, but I would certainly hope based on our story that we could, you know, make a case that we're just simply not prepared to keep piling on to these problems that we had, so.
Okay, next up, I have got Councilmember Ritchie.
Call the question. Please.
Okay, so Councilmember Gamblin, can you please...
Does he need a second on that?
I don't think so. So Councilmember Gamblin, can you please restate your amendment?
Yes, to instruct staff when they're attending the Growth Caucus to request a zero growth target.
That's the amendment. Okay, the amendment has been restated and is on the floor. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Say nay?
Nay.
You want a head count there, Karen?
Yeah, actually, can I... I believe it was... Let me go through. I'm going to have... I'm going to go through the list. Yell if you were a yee or a nay. Deputy Mayor?
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin? You know.
Aye.
Councilmember Ritchie?
Nay.
Councilmember Ross?
Aye.
Councilmember Stewart?
Nay.
Councilmember Trine?
Aye.
And that was an aye. Okay. So the amendment passed. And I think for me, it...
Councilmember Gamblin, aren't you going to say you're worried about Councilmember Ross? He looked a little tired there for a second, too.
Let me just do a point of order and just get through this, please.
Okay.
Leave the personal stuff aside. Mayor, can you please?
Yes, I'm... You know what, Jason?
On both sides, on both sides, please.
I'm with you. Okay, so, next up?
I mean, you had an amendment, but we didn't vote on the main motion as amended.
The main motion is the amendment, isn't it? The lowest turning to zero.
We voted on an amendment. We have no main motion unless we vote on the main motion as amended.
Need a vote on the main motion.
Going back to the main motion as amended, please state the main motion as amended, and I believe that was Christie.
No, Jason.
No, it wasn't. It's... Jason's right. It's the motion, it's to ask for zero, essentially.
Ask for the lowest number.
No, it's not the lowest number. The motion is... The lowest number was my motion. The motion was then amended to be zero. So now the new motion is to direct the city staff to seek zero, not the lowest, to seek zero at the caucus meetings, period. And there was a second to Councilmember Gamblin's motion.
Let's just call the question on this one.
Yes, with explanation.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, it's 5-2. All right, we are going to move on to our next, which, please, you guys, let it take an hour. Okay, we are going to go on to the next one, which is the Issaquah School District, Providence Heights letter. So David Pyle.
Move to table.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Nay.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, it's 5-2. All right, we are going to move on to our next, which, please, you guys, let it take an hour. Okay, we are going to go on to the next one, which is the Issaquah School District, Providence Heights letter. So David Pyle.
Move to table.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, looks like it's going to be tabled till next week.
I think we've run David through the mill enough.
I would agree with that. Okay. Okay, so the next up is the budget. Do you guys feel up to doing the budget? Do you think we're going to get a whole lot done on the budget at midnight?
Move to table.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Up, discussion?
Discussion, please.
Can I speak to my motion?
Yes, you may.
I'd like to amend my motion to speak to table the motion to a specific date, which I think is appropriate to do anyway, just than tabling out into infinity. But I would like to table the motion specifically to our next regularly scheduled council meeting, which I believe is next Tuesday. And speaking to these budget issues that we've got back from the matrix, at midnight is not going to lead to a conducive conversation.
Can I make a friendly amendment to that, in that we go with what we had suggested and perhaps start early next week?
How early?
I don't care. 45 minutes?
We don't defend their amendments. Then I will restate my motion to say that we start a meeting, table this motion till next week's meeting, a regularly scheduled meeting next Tuesday, and then have an early start time of 45 minutes, so 5:15, or 5:45, as opposed 6:30.
Excellent. Second. Discussion?
Yeah, I just want to check with Dave Rude, the city manager, if this all aligns with our schedule, and if there's any go-backs, do we have time for go-back? I'm prepared.
Midnight key or two, Karen?
See you. Dave, are you there?
Yes.
Okay, they're wondering if that fits with their schedule?
Well, actually, next, on the 10th, it doesn't fit very well if you want to stay on your public hearing schedule. You can start early. I've only had one inquiry of all the questions, so I could make some assumptions here. If I could assume that questions were answered, because I've not received anything except for a clarifying question from Councilman Ross, provided the answer to earlier on the staffing matrix, then the major issue comes, if the council has specific direction to amend my recommended budget and/or get to the main issue of how you want to see it packaged and what decisions the council wants to make on total expenditures, total revenues, divide new revenues, have no new revenues, allocate the reserves. Those are the main issues that need to be addressed, discussed among yourselves, and direction provided. We won't have any time in order to adjust and go into the public hearing prior to the public hearing. We can go into the public hearing, you could have a dialogue and then begin to do public comment, and we can hope to have things answered and resolved and stay on the schedule of having a public hearing carried on to November 17th, I believe it is. And if the council is satisfied, a motion could be made to adopt the budget. If not, then you would defer until December 2nd, unless you had special meetings. Next week is, in fact, a special meeting, not a regularly scheduled meeting, but it's already scheduled out there. So that's my input.
Okay. Thank you. Chris, did you have any other questions for him?
Yeah, he asked a question, if we're close to a short putt on this, I don't think we are. I think there's a lot, a heavy, more heavy lifting on this budget. Staff, Dave and staff have done a tremendous job being transparent in my discussions with them, but there is some hard discussions that need to be had. They're all aware of it, and I think that we need more just 45-minute extra time. It almost feels like we need to, I hate to say this, but do a dedicated special meeting, maybe Monday before Tuesday. I don't care what works with the council. And before we just simply punt this off the agenda tonight, I think I'm okay with that if we have some dedicated time before the special meeting, so then we get it to a short putt situation on Tuesday, based on the schedule on hearing. So I think that'd be the best approach. And so I'd like your thoughts from the rest of the committee.
If I could speak to that for a moment? I think Councilman Ross is correct when he says there's some difficult decisions to make, or at least there's some heavy lifting. And I see that as the discussions among the council, some significant policy issues need to be made. I'll just state it at that.
I'd like to amend my motion, please.
Okay.
And I apologize if I'm interrupting anybody, but I agree with Councilman Ross, and I agree with City Manager Rude. I think we need to have a special meeting specifically dedicated to this, and it is critically important that we deal with this. It is a timely matter. I move that we reschedule, or we schedule a special meeting. It's going to have to be, we have to have seven days for public noticing. So a second meeting next week specifically dedicated to the budget. It can be a study session. A separate meeting next week from beyond a regularly scheduled meeting on Tuesday.
Can I suggest Monday? We don't need seven days. That's only for a public hearing.
I'm by me.
That's correct. You have, we have scheduled a public hearing on Tuesday. The notice is out there. You don't need it for a study session.
Then a 6:30 start on Monday for a study session dedicated to the budget is my motion.
Non-mandatory, correct?
Mandatory.
No, I think it should be mandatory.
Why would it be non-mandatory?
You can't make it mandatory this late.
It's a budget. Well, I mean, it's as mandatory as any meeting, right?
Right. People don't want to come, they don't want to come, right? It's their...
Well, you can't make it mandatory seven days ahead of time. Can everybody make it next Monday? I cannot.
Mayor, is there a day next week that you can?
Next Thursday.
The problem is, is we have the public hearing on a budget that we haven't figured out yet, and I think that's disingenuous to our constituents if we hold a public hearing on a budget that we made.
Then I suggest we go with what we had all agreed to, which was to hold it right before the day of the meeting, which is what was our backup, which is...
We didn't read it out.
Well, we did have a vote on...
We did not all read it out.
Well, I'm sorry, it was all but two. So, you know, we can go back to have it scheduled, which would have been before the original meeting. And we looked at that, and that was, you know, that was a majority vote. That was what I had scheduled off for next week.
Is there any wiggle room in the public hearing so that we could have the study session session next Tuesday could be dedicated to the budget, and the public hearing gets pushed out to the 17th and the 2nd? Can we not do it this week? All we need is 24 hours' notice. We have Wednesday and Thursday that we can do it. I'm certainly amenable if we have to put it on the weekend, but this is why annual budget is really important.
Can I get an answer to my question there? Can I get an answer to the question?
You're in the queue, and I haven't been able to talk.
Sorry.
Pam, what was your question?
I wanted to know if there was any flexibility in rescheduling the public hearing so that we could have the study session next Tuesday on the budget and have the public hearing for the budget on November 17 and December 2. I don't know what the deadlines are, and if there's, if we could do that, and then that way, we can make sure everybody can attend the meeting next Tuesday, since it's an important discussion on the budget.
We have Erin coming up to the microphone.
Okay.
Let's see if you can... Can everybody hear me? Okay.
Which one do I need on?
Are you hearing?
On?
Yes. There we go.
but this is why annual budget is really important.
Can I get an answer to my question, sir? Can I, can I get an answer to your question?
I'm in the queue, and I haven't been able to talk.
Sorry.
Pam, what was your question?
I wanted to know if there was any flexibility in rescheduling the public hearing so that we could have the study session next Tuesday on the budget and have the public hearing for the budget on November seventeen and December second. I don't know what the deadlines are, and if there's, if we could do that, and in that way, we can make sure everybody can attend the meeting next Tuesday since it's an important discussion on the budget.
We have Aaron coming up to the microphone.
Okay.
Let's see if you can, can you, can everybody hear me? Okay?
Which one do I need on?
Are you hearing?
On?
Test, test, can you hear me now? Okay, so the November tenth and November seventeenth are the two public hearing dates. So those have already been published, and that's state law that you have to publish two consecutive weeks prior to the holding of the first public hearing. So those ones, those two particular dates have already been set. Those public hearings are in relation to the preliminary budget that was filed. So that's what those public hearing purposes are. If council wants to hold another session, they can do that. They just need to keep that public hearing on the tenth open and consider the public input being received on the tenth in their consideration for what budget adjustments they would want to make in the future after the tenth.
Aaron, could we actually then extend the public hearing into December if we needed to? If we made major changes and we wanted to get public input?
I, so the property tax piece has to be resolved by the end of November. So your last date currently that you're scheduled for is the seventeenth in order to take action on the property tax ordinance. That's the piece that has to be submitted to King County by the end of November.
Can you repeat that? You cut out, I didn't hear that, I'm sorry.
The property tax ordinance would have to be put in place by the end of November. The budget ordinance can extend into December if needed.
Mayor, can I, I've been sitting in the queue, and I'm kind of hoping I might be able to make a few suggestions here.
Aaron, just in case she needs you. Okay, Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, so I think, basically, what Aaron just said, we have to figure out the property tax piece, and that is a large chunk of what's going to drive, I think, the conversations that council's going to have as to whether or not we need all eleven percent, a portion of that, none of it. I have a sneaking suspicion there is a very lengthy discussion here about, you know, policy-wise, what we want to do. And my, my suggestion would be if there's a day this week that council can meet, either it's during the day or it's at night, the staffs are already ready to go with this stuff. I understand folks work, and that may not be current with their schedules, but, you know, we're gonna spend twenty minutes talking about when we're gonna schedule this meeting here, and we, you know, we might, I'm gonna suggest we don't delay, and we just dive into at least a portion of it tonight. I agree if people don't want to do that, but we're all here. And staff's been here waiting for a really long time, not that they want to continue staying till one o'clock in the morning, but my suggestion would be a day this week. I mean, there is a Wednesday and a Thursday that we could potentially meet and have this discussion. And I think that would be helpful in advance of the public hearing, so that the public knows what to comment on.
Okay, I'd like to modify my motion. Mayor, may I modify my motion, please?
Oh, sure.
We're all trying here, people, take a deep breath, right? I agree with Councilmember, excuse me, Deputy Mayor Malchow. I agree with, with the things that Finance Director Anton has laid out. I think that there is no good day to do this. There is certainly not a good time to do this at midnight. I would like to amend my motion to state that on Thursday of this week, which would be the fifth, I believe, that we have a study session between six-thirty and eight-thirty, and/or six-thirty start time, hopefully not past eight-thirty, to specifically focus on hashing out our issues on the budget so that we can maintain our, our schedule as far as property tax ordinances are concerned.
We cannot have...
I second that.
Wait a minute, Thursday's out because the Planning Commission uses the chamber?
Yes, thank you. What day is the chamber available?
Friday.
If I may?
I think even the Parks Commission has a meeting on Wednesday.
If I may, we could switch the December first meeting to be November thirtieth, so we could still just keep next Tuesday's meeting, and then have the seventeenth, and then we'd still be able to meet on the thirtieth, November thirtieth possibly, if that worked for people, and be able to make decisions on the tax, the property tax law.
We notice those public hearings.
Well, we can still have the public hearings, we're just gonna add one on November thirty.
But then we'd be back to the same place where we'd be discussing budget, we'd be having a public hearing on a budget that we haven't figured out yet. So what is the comment, what is the public going to comment on a budget that we haven't figured out?
Well, they're gonna give us input that we should consider for the budget anyway, and it's gonna continue through the month. I mean, they're no great option, so I'm just throwing it out.
So, the commission that meets what day that was a conflict, they can...
We've got the Parks, we've got the Parks that utilized this on Wednesday, and then we've got the Planning Commission on Thursday.
So Planning Commission's televised, I understand them being in chamber, but on Wednesday, Parks Commission, they can use the large conference room and not, and we still use the facilities for council special meeting.
I can't do tomorrow, guys, sorry, or Wednesday.
Well, you know, hey, I yelled out for that, Pam.
Well, no, we're trying to find a different day because you can't do Monday, so we're all...
The Deputy Mayor might not yell at you.
Well, you probably will.
God, guys, please. Point of order, one person at a time, please. Point of order, one person at a time, please.
Oh, sorry, all right, one person at a time, we're still trying to figure out the schedule, folks.
Can I ask that the city manager work with the mayor over email and the rest of the council to try to find a date that fits with Finance Director Anton's statutory requirements that allows us to have a couple hours, one day, sometime soon? Can I just throw this in their lap, Dave? I'm sorry, I don't know, man, you know?
Well done, Jason. I'll second that.
We should make this like negotiations, you come up with a decision, or you can't leave the table.
That's not right.
Because if you can't agree here, you're not gonna agree to anything that the mayor and I come up with. That's my opinion.
I agree with that.
Friday this week.
Friday's the Sabbath for some of us.
Why can't we just do it now? We're all here.
Because we're already grumpy with each other, so it's not gonna be productive.
Karen, I'm sorry to do this, but can everyone else make Monday?
Yes.
Yes.
Let's make Friday, Thursday, and Wednesday, so pick a date, let's go.
Monday.
Monday. Six to the left, please.
Sorry, Karen.
No, that's okay, it'll make... Never mind. That will work, then.
Do we have consensus, dare I ask?
Yes, as long as it's not mandatory, so it doesn't count against me for not being there.
You have an excuse. But with that said, we should proxy any thoughts you may have with someone.
Did you input on the matrix, Karen?
Yeah, I will, no, because most of my stuff was covered under everybody's stuff, but I will get a list of stuff to Dave.
Great, that'd be perfect.
Do we need to vote on this?
I would suggest it.
Please, please.
Motion to have our study session budget-specific on Monday, the, I don't have a calendar, I can't even see straight, Monday, the following Monday, a week from today, the tenth is out, there's the eighth, ninth. Eleven-nine, six-thirty, study session budget.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, that's under all ayes, opposed, aye. Okay, all right, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Do you have an executive session?
Nope, not if we adjourn.
That's right, we can do it, we can do it next week. What do you need?
Are we voting on the motion, or we?
Yep.
Is there a need for an executive session or anything else?
No, you know what, we can do it next week. I think everybody's about as grumpy as we can be tonight.
Then let's vote and go home.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you to Pervin Hill for hanging out.
Aye.
Aye.
Way to go, Ken, aye.
Hey, good night, everybody.
Good night.